Good evening. Please welcome you here for this evening, Mayor. Please join me, span, nation. I have the official people there on the corner of silence. And the members of Dr. Matthew's grandmother, Dr. Matthew serves on our civil service board. So we have a brief moment of silence when we be led by a pledge by Mr. Jay Green. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to yield our service to you, to show our fellow mankind what service is hard in life. We ask that you will help us to yield our will to your will, that we may do what is in the best interest of these blessings and others. We ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Praise.
Praise the nations to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. To the Republic, which is saints, one nation, on the God in the gospel, with every team and justice.
This morning has that brings us to item number three, public comments as it relates to items on the agenda. Louisiana Open Meeting Laws provides that the public has the opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes for your comments. And the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you may ask questions and demand answers from the board, board members, president, or the city employees. At this time, we're going to recess to the sales tax.
Do you need some comments?
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead. Would you state your name, sir?
Ricky Anderson, Bachelor Lou Viana, item number fourteen A and B.
Yes, sir.
Oh, this twenty-four forty-two seventy-nine established the finance committee and the rule therein. Also be revolution twenty-four twenty seventy-three. With that said, how can we pass revolution twenty-four twenty seventy-three? And if the finance committee has never been established, to either go over the budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five? That is my question to this board. You don't have to answer. And I ask this board not to pass resolution twenty-four twenty seventy-three. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Any other comments, please? And now we will recess. Did we have roll call to determine a form? I think we roll called to determine a form.
District A, Ms. Tappin?
Here.
District B, Mr. Bradford?
Here.
District C, Mr. Green?
Here.
We have a form.
We have a form. Thank you. This is Ms. Austin's first meeting. We certainly want to welcome her aboard. Let us recess to sales tax district meeting. Sales tax district number one meeting. You have that in your packet as well. All right. This sales tax meeting is now called to order. Let's do the roll call again. Ms. Austin.
District A, Ms. Tappin?
Here.
District B, Mr. Bradford?
Here.
District C, Mr. Green?
Here.
District D, Mr. Green? District E, Mr. Lot? We have a form, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Number three, on that agenda, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Louisiana Open Meeting Laws provides that the public has opportunity to address this board prior to our taking action on an agenda item at today's meeting. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak on any item before a vote is taken. You will be afforded five minutes to make your comments and the entire public comment period will be limited to thirty minutes unless an extension is granted. This is not a question and answer session where you can ask questions and demand answers of the board members, president, or the city employees.
Yes, ma'am. Once again, Ricky Allen Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Resolution item number five, resolution twenty-four twenty sixty-eight, B S T one thirty-four. I'm asking this board not to approve of this resolution. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments? All right. That brings us to item number four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
May I make a motion?
Thank you.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I approve.
Roll call.
Ms. Tappin?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Okay. Right, Jones?
It requires the majority of the voting of the membership. You don't have a majority of the membership because you only have two of the five votes.
All right.
So it fails.
Fails.
All right. So the minutes. July eleventh. Okay. It brings us to item number five, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-sixty-eight, B S T one thirty-four, amending an operating budget and street projects for revenues and expenditures for the Bachelor Sales Tax District number one for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty-three and ending the year June thirtieth twenty-four and adopting an operating budget and street projects revenue and expenditure for the Bachelor Sales Tax District number one for the fiscal year beginning July one twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Properly moved by Mrs. Tappin and seconded by Mr. Green. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I approve.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Tappin?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
No.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Now, before we continue, can we get some clarification from the attorney so he can explain how it go?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Jones, even though it was two to one, the motion still fails. Explain to them why. Explain to the public why because it may be confused.
So when a member is absent or abstained, it requires a majority of the voting of the membership. The membership is the district's, whether the president or not. The membership of the board is the five city council members. You had to have a majority of the voting of the membership.
You had to have a majority of the membership. The membership encompasses all members of the board. So a two is two to five whenever you have there because you don't have a vote. An extension vote or a no vote when you're not here, you can't vote when you're not here, is a no vote. So if right currently, the way it sits, the vote that previously existed, that would be a two to five vote. A majority of the membership of the board did not vote in favor of it. So there it fails.
So it's a no vote. Not here is a no vote.
It doesn't count as approval. Correct. It just counts as the motion fails because it was not approved.
Okay. All right. That brings us to item number six. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the sales tax meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
Properly moved by Mrs. Tappin and seconded by Mr. Bradford. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion cares. That brings us back to our regular meeting. Let's do roll call again, resuming our regular meeting.
Mr. Dave, Ms. Tappin?
Here.
District B, Mr. Bradford?
Here.
District C, Mr. Green?
Here.
District D, Mr. Green? District E, Mr. Lot? We have a form there.
Thank you.
Announcements. Item number seven. Okay, the special meeting, five thirty P M Tuesday, August twentieth twenty-four, to adopt the millage for the twenty twenty-four property tax year. Hearing will begin at five fifteen. Are there any other announcements?
I have none, ma'am.
Who are you?
Letting everybody know, some new variant COVID out. And some of the symptoms, they're kind of different this time. People would have sore throat, they will have loss of smell, they may have trouble breathing and congestion. They may or may not have fever. They may have something called conjunctivitis where you have irritation in the eye. You still might sneeze, cough, but fever may not be one of the symptoms. So if you are feeling weak, please go get checked out. And if you are sick, please stay away from areas that's populated, stay at home, and stay away from areas that are not adequately ventilated. We have not been mandated to start wearing wet masks again, but if you are immunocompromised, please put on a mask.
Okay. Thank you. Coming from the healthcare professional. We have not reached the pandemic. Did you know, Ms. Tappin?
No, ma'am. Not yet.
All right. So we need to make sure that we wash our hands and exercise caution. Thank you for that announcement. Also, I want to say thank you. There's just too many names for all of the entities, individuals, and organizations that have done something for back to school. It's just overwhelmingly nice to see so many kind people who are thinking about our children and we certainly want our children to get off to a good school year. Also, Bachelor is the recipient of the twenty, one of the recipients of the twenty twenty-three Community Achievement Award. We have been identified and cited for honorable mention. Twenty twenty-three Achievement Awards Competition sponsored by Louisiana Municipal Association, Louisiana Department of Economic Development, Louisiana Industrial Development Executives Association, Capital Regional Planning Commission, Louisiana Office of State Fire Launcher, and Louisiana Main Street for Outstanding Community Improvement in Community Development. Mr. Bradford was in attendance at the banquet where this award was given. And the project that was submitted was for the parks improvement. And in that submission, I wrote about the parks and how much it meant to the communities and how they came about their name and how endearing, like Card Park and Smith Wilson Park, which was, the name was changed from Eastside Park to Smith Wilson in honor of the two officers that lost their lives in the line of duty. Dotson Park named for the Dotson family, the Ralph George named for the Ralph Otto Davenport and George Smith, the fathers of Lula and Ivory Smith, and so on. So I was very pleased that we were honored with that recognition because our parks mean a lot to us. And I'm going to cut off my announcement when I trust that we'll get through the meeting. Not leaving out anything, but I have to be up at four o'clock in the morning to be on the road to Baton Rouge to address change orders on the roof that's going up at this present moment. So. Any other announcements? Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, let's move us on to item number eight. Approve previous minutes, regular meeting, June thirteenth, and special meeting, June twentieth twenty-four and June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four. And we missed that last month. Do you want to do the June meetings together?
No, we can do all of them.
Okay. And including the July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to approve these minutes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve minutes from the regular meeting, June thirteenth, special meetings, June twentieth, June twenty-seven, and regular meeting that we missed last month, June eleventh. Okay.
If I can make a correction, they have amended thirty-three, four oh six. You can pass a resolution by majority vote of the present members, an ordinance you cannot. It has to be by the membership. Yeah. So resolutions, those two resolutions carry, they do pass. Because they amended thirty-three, four oh six during COVID, they allow that. Where resolutions can pass, ordinances cannot.
Okay.
So clarity on that for any confusion.
Okay.
Majority of the members present on a resolution under thirty-three colon four oh six.
Thirty-three with them?
Colon four oh six. And an ordinance requires the membership because it's a law.
Okay.
So sorry for the confusion there.
Thank you for the correction.
Make sure that goes.
So that would show that the sales tax meeting, the minutes and the resolution were approved.
Was approved.
Okay.
With Mr. Bradford.
What's the motion?
Okay. The budget is by ordinance, right?
The budget is by resolution.
Why?
Uh, I don't know. It was, I guess, out of, I would have to take a guess, but it's.
We recommend it. We make motion that it be by ordinance, not ridiculous.
Okay. The ordinance has to lay over for thirty days. And it changed. It used to be by ordinance, Mr. Green, to answer your question. And somewhere along the way, as history would have it and the minds and the wisdom of my predecessors, it became by resolution. So we would have to have an ordinance and it would have to lay over thirty days.
Correct. Uh, during the general.
Correct. It has the normal delay in it. The Larson Act delineates out that a Larson Act community has to do it by ordinance. The, however, anybody who is underneath the Home Rule or Legislative Charter can do it by resolution or ordinance. But if you're a pure Larson Act, you have to do it by ordinance. So we don't have to do it by ordinance. It's choice.
But we should determine.
Correct. There's two different, correct. There's just two different delays.
But the motion was made by the council as an ordinance, not ridiculous. We should go back and look at the record.
Yes, there was a, I remember back in, when we had the first meeting in June, there was a thing to do it by ordinance and have it separated, the twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-four, twenty-five. I remember correctly.
That's why it had to be, that's why it had to be posted, ran in the general for so many days and it had to sit for fifteen days because it did it by ordinance. That was.
No, that's the Budget Act that requires that. Whether it's ordinance or resolution, Budget Act requires the publication and the running of a public hearing. The adoption instrument can be resolution or ordinance. You would just have to run the difference between the resolution and the ordinance is that in the ordinance, you have to actually publicize the adoption instrument pursuant to the ordinance requirements, which is to run twice and then to introduce at one, at one meeting, adopt to another.
It's done by the budget.
Well, so there's three components. There is your budget, there's your budget statement, and then there's your adoption instrument. Your adoption instrument is the third requirement. It can be either a resolution or ordinance. If the adoption instrument is an ordinance, then it has to have all the normal delays of an ordinance.
That's what, that's my point. I said it was done by ordinance. That's why it was delayed. It's not, we didn't do it by resolution. So I don't know where that come from. When did it get changed? The council didn't change it. Who changed it?
Uh, I think, I know that initially, I remember, I can recall from the first meeting, that it was listed as an introduction, but I know that each time it's come before the council, it's been done, it's been put on as a resolution. The last time it was voted down is when we didn't adopt the last one, that was by resolution.
My point is, who changed it from an ordinance to a resolution? The council didn't go on. So who changed it?
And who are you referring to as well?
I know in the first meeting, and don't get my dates wrong, it was the one that we had in June. It was the first, or the end of May, first of June was a special, was a special meeting to introduce the budget, was I think was the title. There was the, I don't think there was an adoption instrument at that time. It was just the budget was given to everybody. I know that the public at the adoption meeting for that budget that was existed, it was done by resolution. There was a resolution attached to it. I know that at the subsequent meetings, it's been a resolution. And now it's at this one as a resolution. What was advertised and ran the three times was the budget and the budget statement. The adoption instrument, you can choose resolution or ordinance on it.
I still have a question there. How exactly changed it?
I have never s, all I can recall, and I have to look at them, but I'm trying to recall. All I can recall is that the meeting, at that meeting, there was no instrument attached to it. We just got the budget at the first one. It was the end of May or the first of June, whenever, first time.
Can you recall the reason why we switched it from a resolution to an ordinance? You remember why?
Yeah. I remember the discussions regarding that is because ordinances, well, there's variation of differences. The resolution is an agreement by the council. An ordinance is law. It's.
It's a.
But and then, and then there's.
Don't leave it slow so we can understand. So the reason that we switched it from a resolution to an ordinance so people understand what's going on.
So whenever you have a resolution, that resolution just is, it's a document that says the council agrees. It formally shows the agreement of the council and the majority vote of it. An ordinance acts as the law of the council, similar to if the legislature passes a law. So it's, it's actually a law of the council. It's a set in stone thing. The budget always acts as either, it always acts as law. Because you're confined within the Budget Act. Once passed, the Budget Act and the state law applies to that.
Well, I'm just asking because we are only pressed for time with the budget. It don't really matter which way we do it, long as it's done right. I just was asking a question because it changed from what we originally thought was going on. It was a resolution. So it don't really matter how we go about passing it. I just, I just want some clarification.
Yeah. And there is some backend to it that a resolution can't be vetoed. So the mayor has no right to veto. In fact, although most municipalities do it, there's nothing that's required to be signed in a resolution. Once it, once, once it's passed by the board, the vote's taken, the clerk just can simply register how the vote went and sign it and say this is a certified copy of the action that was taken at that board. Although historically, y'all have signed on it, even I've signed some of them. An ordinance is required to be signed by the mayor. If it's not signed within a ten or fourteen day period, then it's considered rejected by the mayor. At that point, it's considered vetoed. And then it comes back to the board. The board can vote by two-thirds to do it, just like a normal law. So an ordinance takes the character of a law. A resolution takes the character of just a formal declaration of the intent of the board and authority that it could grant.
So a resolution pretty much is just a general agreement with.
Yeah. Resolution is, is the equivalent of signing a contract or something like that. It's just something showing the consent or the authority or the approval of. You can use resolutions to do many things, but it's not the, the binding act that a law is.
All right. I, I don't recall the, I do remember the conversation, but we researched the record. I don't remember the layover time and I do remember the conversation and the reference to that.
Had they shown in the minutes, I get to add what minutes you're referring to. You're not sure. That's why I don't vote on the minutes because it's snapshot. They're not completed. It should be four minutes, but we can refer back to. You made a change there. I'm going to research after the meeting. I won't hold up in the meeting, but I kind of think you were right to first rule it, but we're not going to go through that. But.
I was pulling, I was pulling from, from memory. I remember that it was listed on the agenda in that meeting as an introduction, but what was given to us was the budget. There wasn't an adoption instrument with it. It was just one part of it, which was the budget.
Right. We're moving, I'm going to move on with our research after we're bringing back before the council. She has to say, was we due to research?
Okay. How can the YouTube is available and you can hear it in its entirety? All right. That brings us to item number nine. Consideration of an action on the course of committees appointed of the governing body. A Finance Committee Report.
I'm the chairman of the Finance Committee.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson there at the court.
Oh, right.
And I want the attorney to speak about it. When you did the research about Finance Committee, that's not even establishing officially. The city of Bachelor, we really did not actually have an official. When you go back and look through the audits and you look through the charter, it's not the, it's not established law as to Finance Committee, but based on past practices, what, you know, we have been operating in that capacity, but not officially. So you want to speak about that?
Yes. So what had occurred, and it's been some time researching to try and find out what is the scope? What is the avenue? Where is this at? Especially in relation to a lot of the things we dealt with, with audits and budgets. And one of the things that we deal with is, is what is the concept of checks and balances? Which creates into audits usually? And so if we're looking for it, it's kind of like the environmental stuff. We just realized that, look, pattern of practice is, is that they've always done this, that they've had it. That, and it may have been, the thing with resolutions is this, is you can say something from it and have no paper record of that resolution. So it may have been something that was a voice vote or a discussion that resulted in a resolution vote of it. But in order to establish it, give it formality, to give everybody the ability to have the structure and for the council, the administration, and the public to know the scope of what the Finance Committee is, what the duties are, so it's readily available for everybody to be able to understand. Because as we've said before, and as Councilman Green has said before, and others have said, these things are going to far outlast us. And so you have to think down the highway if you're going to develop this thing as a way to create checks and balances and ensure the longevity of it and the scope. And then it's probably best to have it recorded so that everybody understands how everything's going. So that's where this went, was to develop that into an actual formal practice so that there is a defined rights and duties of that committee. And just as simple as, when it comes up for the committee report, it's always kind of, who's going to give the committee report? Well, you can define that down, how the committee report gets here, just like planning and zoning. It's no different than planning and zoning committee. Planning and zoning has one more structure of who is the head of it, what they, what the scope of that, that board is, how things go through the board, so that people aren't asking, well, how does this work? There's clarity so that people understand. Because this thing, we all right here sitting here today may know how it works, but things change. Everything changes. That's, this document and these laws and charters and ordinances are going to out the call of us. So to ensure that that exists and exists within the scope that you want with the powers and it's reasonably defined for everybody. Everybody may be in agreement today, but there's always tomorrow. And so it gives some stability to it. So that's what we sought to do with formalizing that. And, you know, I had some talks with the legislative order and just, I've been on the hospital service board. As their attorney, I've been in the Los Parish Police Bureau. I've helped out their attorney stuff. Helped out Losito Police Bureau. I've been. I've been in the Moe House Parish Police Bureau, I've helped out their attorney stuff, helped out Mochetown Police Bureau, I've been at Starling and stuff. It's just good to have those things formalized, so that everybody's operating underneath, what is the scope and duties of that board? So that not only does the board know, but also the council knows, and then the administration knows, and the public knows. And so that's what we sought to do with this, was to formalize what was basically pattern of practice.
Alright, any other boards coming out of the finance committee?
I had, I want to put it on the finance committee before we take a vote off.
Normally it was.
Item number sixty, I want to say sixty-one? Sixty-one, I see that, I think, I think we got to make a date correction. This is for the Moe House, I said, Moe House Academic Development due for the year twenty-three, twenty-four, should I read twenty-four, twenty-five? I mean, because the check, the request was made on in June of this year. And and I I I couldn't give you clarity, that cover, we do this once a year, no problem with doing it, don't get me wrong, I just need a date correction, make sure we're paying for the proper time period. Uh, the request is June twenty-four invoice, June twenty-four. Uh, but it say twenty-four, twenty-five, I mean, excuse me, twenty-three, twenty-five, it should say twenty-four, twenty-five. Before this year, Miss King, she she don't have enough, you know? Maybe she can answer that one.
Uh.
I might not be the best typist.
I'm sorry.
Said I may not be the best typist.
Uh, I mean, excuse me, not not from the audience.
You know, I I do make this invoice every year, and I I suppose that uh, uh, if it says twenty-three, twenty-five. It should be twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
I said I'm not the best typist.
That's okay, that's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
But uh, but but that uh, that's the case. And our our year starts in uh, October first, so that's why it always says that. Because our dues run from.
What would you say?
October first, actually through September, early.
Okay, what you saying, Miss 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 uh, King, it it should read twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that that that's, was the record clear on the record?
Right.
Uh, uh, Miss clerk, Miss, Miss Austin, you, 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 Miss King? She said that that invoice that was issued, that she received in uh, the July payment?
Yeah.
Of two thousand dollars, it should read for the year twenty-four, twenty-five, instead of twenty-three, twenty-five.
Yeah.
I mean, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for your continued support, we really, uh, the Economic Development Office here doesn't get a lot of funding from many sources, and so we run a very lean budget, and we depend heavily on the support from the city of Bastrop. And I appreciate it.
We appreciate you, what you do to it, well.
For the record, Miss King, if you stayed, man.
Oh, my name's Kate King, I'm CEO of uh, Moe House Economic Development Corporation. Thank you.
I got, I got some concern about sixty-three.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Mr. Green.
It's the uh, Moe House Parish Sheriff's Department inmate housing. Last month, we paid twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars to the sheriff department. To house inmates, so if you break that down, that's about twenty-five inmates at nine hundred and sixty dollars a month. Mind you, these are misdemeanors. This is not sustainable. We, we're gonna, the city's gonna go bankrupt if we don't come up with a comprehensive plan and think outside the box and try to rectify this problem. This is, I wanna say it again, twenty, this is not the Trojan. This is just housing, like the people who get arrested after six o'clock, you have to stay in to the next day. So if you get arrested at six o'clock, or after six o'clock, the city is gonna be liable for thirty-two dollars whether you stay or not, because you was over there. And if you stay to the next day, it goes up to sixty-four dollars. Or if you got a person with misdemeanor, and they can't afford to get out, they stare there a month. The city, we gonna, we gonna be out of nine hundred and sixty dollars for misdemeanor. Uh, breaking a window somewhere, I'm saying, this this, this is not sustainable. You cannot continue, we cannot as a city, continue to 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 pay this type of funding. So we gotta get with somebody, the attorney, the judge, the district attorney or whatever, not the district attorney. Cause these are misdemeanors, we gotta come up with solutions to try to resolve these issues. And that's just kinda stuck out to me, because that's twenty-five, comes out to about twenty-five inmates a year. I mean, a month, over there if you break it down.
And it and it looks like, and I've I've asked about these bills, so Miss Austin has provided them to us.
Yes, sir.
I told, I told the council and administration that I'd look into what were the actual crimes related to it. But to give you an idea, uh, this, that bill is related to June first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is that, and it's twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. It totals seven hundred and eighty-four days across forty-eight inmates. I will say of note, it appears that there were sixteen individuals who spent thirty days in the jail on behalf of city charges, and there were six that spent between twenty and twenty-nine days in the parish jail.
What did crime look like?
They they don't have the crimes, so it's it's kinda as I discussed before, uh, when we talked about uh, possible things.
They're misdemeanors, right?
They're all misdemeanors, they all are misdemeanors. Uh, these are crimes that on the harshest, uh, would be a DWI, you don't have domestic use battery or anything like that, cause those are required to go over to district court. The highest crime that you could have is uh, DWI, which historically even DWI, it'd have to be a first or second. Uh, DWI, first or second in district court, I can tell you from uh, practice on both sides of the street. Historically results in in a probation, that's a, that, the standard plea offer on a first is twenty-four months probation. You have a ninety day sentence suspended for twenty-four months probation, you pay a fine of seven hundred and fifty bucks plus cost of court. You have to do so many community service hours. Uh, it's it's very rare anybody ever spends it over there. On a second, you have to do thirty days of community service hours, and the fine usually goes to a thousand dollars in cost of court. But there again, two years probation. Uh, both those crimes very reluctantly, does anybody really ever serve, because of the cost of it. And but understand that in district court, the parish, uh, that is the sheriff's jail, that is a parish crime. So, and the police jury helps fund the jail.
So I got another question, since since you make this statement.
Okay, Mr. Green.
You can't bond out after six, so let me just give you a hypothetical. If someone is taken to the sheriff's department over at six o'clock, whatever, and they bond out the next day. So it's, that equates to like thirty-two dollars just for an arrest, because you can't bond out. Do, how how do we, how do you, how do we come about those things? Do you have to be over there a certain time, or is it when you booked? How do we end up paying that thirty-two dollars? I just say, if I'm over there for two hours, do the, are the city, are we responsible for paying for that date?
So when you're booked in, the charge is, the charge that is put in there, the moment you're booked in, that's considered a day. That is thirty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Just for, just for being booked in?
Just for being booked in, because that equates to a day.
So in the rest, we we paying thirty-one dollars to to make an arrest?
And it looks like you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten of the forty-eight are one day arrest. The others, so let's call it the two to two to ten day category, the two to five day category. You have six in the two to five category, and then probably six to twenty is. Nine are in what we call the five to twenty day, the five to nineteen day category. Now, I do understand that if they got booked in on June thirtieth, this bill only goes to June thirtieth, so it could just be one day because of that. But this bill, uh, and if they got booked in on June the twenty-ninth, there's gonna have the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, it would show as a two day bill. Although they might have still been in jail past that, so understand, these numbers are capped by the date, so they could have been longer. I just don't have to lie on this bill.
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Happ.
Uh, any way, um, Attorney Jones, you can meet with our city judge, to try to remedy this?
Yes, sir.
Some kind of agreement?
Uh, I think what, I think the dialogue is one is to figure out, are these attributable? There's things such as default days, so not to, to to keep it on the top sheet. There's people who serve jail time and say, hey, you're sentenced to jail for a crime, okay? And there are people who get traffic tickets or a fine. And in lieu, when you plead guilty at traffic ticket, you will receive, let's say, a hundred dollar fine. The judge then sets by what he calls default days, if you default on your financial obligation, then you're required to serve ten days, let's call it that. So there's gonna be some category, are these what we call pure misdemeanors, where you had your theft, uh, you had your DWI, you had your battery. Things that are like that, and then those are what we call Title fourteen, uh, actual criminal statutes. And then you have your motor vehicle violations, which is Title thirty-two, which is, somebody gets a traffic ticket, they plead guilty, they get some time to pay it. And then they don't pay it, and they get a warrant for not appearing, and then they're in there. There's also people who could be serving, cause although it doesn't exist in district court, it does exist in city courts. They call it failure to appear, which is really a contempt charge. It, I I think there's three categories to probably define when we look at this, and what I'm gonna do is export these names to an Excel spreadsheet. And then I can call the city clerk and ask, what was the charge related to this, to the thing? I think you're gonna find there's three categories, one would be what we call Title fourteen crimes, which is historically what you'd think is a misdemeanor assault, battery. Trespass, things like that. I think the other category you're gonna run into is is that there's traffic tickets, and traffic tickets, when somebody pleads guilty, they receive default time. If they miss court on their stay date, they have time to come back and pay their money, then they have to, they have a warrant issued for them. That's called execution sentence, they take them to jail, you either pay the money or you're served the time. The other is people who miss court and get failure to appear, it is a pretty common thing. That failure to appear often results in a fine amount or an amount of time in jail to serve. So for not appearing in court, in city courts, you can be charged with an additional charge, failure to appear. And you'll see that frequently on some of those, uh, some of those tickets that get paid. They say, hey, you have to pay an extra hundred bucks, cause you failed to appear, uh, you had to pay for that charge too. And so there's things like that, are there avenues to look at that? Yes. Uh, that's one thing, uh, later on in this thing, there's there's the Office of Debt Recovery here. Is because there there are unique ways that you can absolve, resolve tickets without using possibly default time. You can use Office of Debt Recovery, can garnish your tax refunds, can go across, there's forty there's forty-eight states that they have agreements with, that they will take tax refunds, they'll go up your bank accounts, they'll garnish. And if you send out a thirty day letter and a sixty day letter, sixty days, that says, hey, look, this debt's final. You were given sixty days to come back and pay this, you did not come back and pay this, you have sixty days to pay it, or we're gonna send it to the Office of Debt Recovery. You then send a thirty day letter, says, hey, you have thirty days to pay this, or we're going to send this to the Office of Debt Recovery. Once we put that matter on the sheet, send it to the Office of Debt Recovery, say we sent those two letters. The Attorney General through contracts with debt collection attorneys, who will do everything, sue, garnish, they have all the powers. Basically, if you didn't pay your tax bill, uh, they will do that. I've had instances before where they sent us, they send you a monthly check with a register on it, that says, here's who you applied to. You take it down there to the clerk, just like somebody was paying it, and they say, hey, you attributed to their bill. I had one time, they took twenty-seven cents out of somebody's bank account, they do not care. And the re, if you send the thirty and sixty day letter, the twenty percent charge gets added to their bill, doesn't come out of your money. So it's zero cost to you, and it finalizes the debt, and it allows more aggressive collection techniques, rather than paying thirty-three dollars and thirty-one seventy-seven a day for jail. So sometimes it's just a little bit thinking outside the box to use them. Uh, I will say that for about a year, we tried to get this agreement going in in other places, and there just wasn't a lot of staff at the Attorney General's office, uh, the Attorney General became the governor, and the governor. And the Solicitor General became the Attorney General, so there's a lot of turnover. They're now fully functioning, uh, I was able to get the contract from them that we would be able to sign. There's also other debts that go onto that, uh, there's things that, such as occupational licenses, which are frequently, we've discussed for the last eight or nine years have not been collected. You can place those occupational licenses in there, send the sixty day letters and the thirty day letter, of which they give you the form for it, you just fill in the name. Uh, if you send both those, you put the dates that you sent it in the in the spreadsheet, and you send it to them, they will then collect those occupational licenses for us, and they'll charge the twenty percent to them. If you have sewer bills, that frequently people will move out and just run out on a sewer or a utility bill. You can send the sixty day letter, send the thirty day letter, and they will collect it for us, and they will charge them twenty percent extra to do it. So a lot of accounts receivable municipal debts that exist. I first became involved with them probably ten years ago, with the DA's office collecting tickets in this manner. But I can speak about that later on, when we get to the agenda.
Uh, uh, go ahead, Mr. Brad. We we're talking about inmates and and housing. Now, for the state, this was the city paid, I'm understanding, don't the state and the federal pay some for each? Let's say to equal each person being housed as well?
They do not, so the only way the state pays for an inmate is if they pay a similar rate, feds pay a little bit higher rate. You would have to be charged with a federal crime in federal custody, and then the feds, the federal government would pay for that if you are a federal facility.
Okay.
Similar with ICE contracts, uh, if there's Immigration and Customs Enforcement, was giving out a lot of contracts, cause they were housing people. You have to have the, you have to have an ICE-approved facility, and it has to be an inmate in the custody of Immigration and Customs. Uh, for inmates that are city-related, that is a non-felony crime. That is a crime for which the jurisdiction of Bastrop is over them, will oversee them. And they are the responsibility of the city of Bastrop to pay for the incarceration of them. The only point at which the state will pay for incarceration is if you are convicted of a felony at hard labor. Uh, so if you get convicted of a felony not at hard labor, that is a parish jail sentence, and the parish bears the cost of that sentence.
Okay. My question, I'm sorry, I just wanna follow up. Oh, 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 I missed my question, I'm trying to figure out, I I I hear, what you're saying and what wasn't being said. I'm trying to figure out, if we had our own jail facility, we would also be eligible to house state inmates, uh, like like the incident, do we call DOC, is it called DOC? We had DOC sending inmates all around the country.
So those contracts, those contracts.
Revenue for the city, if we had our own jail, then we could save, uh, hundred, twenty thousand to a half million dollars a year plus.
No, because, no, because the Department of Corrections will only has, only has the authority to contract with the sheriffs.
Okay.
That's why, same thing with Immigration and Customs is that, uh, one, there's a, there's a pretty good order of requirements. It's required of which, uh, the most expensive is usually the the facility. But once this facility gets a site view, then they go through the employees, there's a pretty steep thing on ICE or federal inmates. And it's historically why the sheriffs, uh, the parish jails tend to be the ones who have to guard the federal is because the requirements of them, but no, you cannot get a state contract to house state inmates as a city.
That's important, I just, I know they make quite a bit of money in incarceration. And I figure that's, you know, if we paying, we could say definitely paying, but we're paying out of pocket too, for those misdemeanors you spoke of earlier. That we had a bigger facility in the future, when we can get a contract with the state, you know, so I know the federal have a different, but with the state, we could do a inmate.
Yeah, and to give you an idea.
Generate revenue for the city, just a thought of revenue.
And to give you an idea, it, that is correct, the Mochetown Correctional Center houses about twelve hundred, of which they tend to keep about a thousand, which are state inmates or federal inmates, the federal inmates pay closer to sixty bucks.
Okay.
And uh, but they tend to keep parish population, they like to keep it. And, uh, but they tend to keep parish population, they like to keep it around two hundred.
Okay.
Because it, it, it is more revenue generating for them to have state or federal inmates.
I gotta save some money, makes sense.
Okay, I'm just. Yeah, I just wanted to make a clarification. Only thing I was asking, when I asked about, and I'm making one, something when I looked at the numbers. About housing, what I was getting at, I don't want to be misquoted. I'm not saying let criminals go free. I'm saying the ones that owe fines, not ones that commit, like, like really, I'm just saying if you, like, when you're arresting and they got an outstanding warrant for failure to appear or fines, I'm talking about, we should, instead of housing those people, because they already owe. We should find a way that we can get those persons to like pay back the fund without arresting them, if that makes sense, you know? Because when you arrest, the only thing you do is costing the city more money. So I'm not advocating going just letting criminals out, so don't misquote me. I'm saying that it's a way that if somebody, you arrest somebody and they owe a fine, I'm talking about the fine payment. The failure to appear and the failure to pay fines and still locking those peoples up for fifteen days, because you know if they didn't pay a four hundred dollar fine, they ain't gonna be able to burn out. So the city's just gonna keep going deeper and deeper in the hole. That's, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an economic, it's an economics thing. Uh, you know, there's no beating around the bush. Traffic tickets at the end of the day are Title thirty-two. Uh, there is no criminal penalty for them other than default time. So let's look at it like this. You get a hundred dollar fine for a ticket plus court costs, let's say court cost is a hundred and fifty bucks, so it's a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket. They turn around and they set default days at twenty-five. Historically, it's one day for every ten dollars. But housing inmate is thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents a day. Uh, you know, here's the reality, you're paying, eh, even on a traffic fine ticket, half is gonna go to the, to the, to the agency, uh, that wrote the ticket, the other half is gonna end up, uh, going and bite it up across the court and the, the, the city. Uh, then of the fine money, of the court cost, now that gets divided up significantly. When you start talking about district attorney's office, which could be the coal area, you're probably bringing home if a hundred and fifty dollars is a court cost or seventy-two fifty is the court cost, as it is in Starlington, of which we bring home about twelve dollars of the court cost. So on its best day, you're probably netting to the city on a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, you're probably netting somewheres around ninety dollars. And an individual could be forced to service sentence. Uh, so you have to ensure that the amount that you're paying to incarcerate somebody for not paying the fine, doesn't outweigh the economics of what you were gonna receive from the, from the financial obligation. If somebody served in ten days on a ticket that was going to cost, you know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, at the end of ten days, you paid three hundred and, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents to house them. You paid nine hundred and fifty-three dollars at the end of thirty days to house them. It's, the reality is, is no, there is no, other than DWI or misdemeanors, which are DW, which are your misdemeanors, historical, your criminal statutes, Title fourteen. Other than that, there's no fines in excess of five hundred bucks. Court cost generally, I think it's seventy-two fifty, anywhere from seventy-two fifty days, six fifty, plus or minus your crime lab fees or anything else like that. But generally speaking, I'd have to ask what court cost is here. But court cost gets divided up, uh, across a multitude of agencies. You literally probably net from court cost maybe fifteen percent.
Attorney Jones, um, I just came off from what Mr. Tapp is saying. Would you do, um, a cost benefit analysis and make a comparison on the debt recovery? And how the city would maximize any use, and the use of debt recovery services in what areas?
And, and I'll speak on it a lot longer when we get to the item, because I have a lot to say about it. Uh, I will say, yeah, I will, I will say this, I will say this, we were the first, uh, we were the first prosecuting agency in the state of Louisiana to actually use that to start collecting debts rather than using default time. And, uh, and it helped out a lot.
All right, that brings us to.
I got one, 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 on the financial report, one, one oh four, I think it is, yeah, one oh four. We also, is it gross C legal out of fee, fifteen hundred dollars? Who, who is that? Never heard of him, what kind of legal, so did they provide?
Uh, one oh four. Dr. Walker is our individual. So whenever we receive, uh, employment, employment complaints regarding specifically, I can tell you, uh, sexual harassment, discrimination, where there's an adopted procedure and code. He acts in there as what we would call a referee, which is an independent party, who hears evidence and things like that and makes a preliminary investigation report. Your sexual harassment and discrimination policy that was adopted by the board and put in place by the city, has in it what is pretty standard across the board, that an independent neutral person comes in, reviews the complaint, takes submissions and evidence and then makes a preliminary finding. From there, that finding then goes to, uh, it can go up to the department head or if it is somebody who is a department head, then it goes to the chief executive officer, which would be the mail, the mayor, to make a final decision. But basically, they act as an independent neutral body to collect evidence, collect statements, and to, uh, issue preliminary findings and reports. So that the agents, so the department head or the chief executive can then make a decision, not have to. You, you don't want a department head interviewing people in their department. You, you don't want the mayor interviewing people. You want somebody who's in between that. Dr. Walker is somebody who has performed that service for the city for, for a pretty good while, as I understand.
Okay, he, what, he said, Dr. Walker, that was a sexual harassment, I guess, I used to tell him, whatever it were, it, it probably mattered.
It was, it was some, some type, some, some type of employment complaint that were required by law to investigate and to make findings on. And it goes through that normal procedure.
Okay, I, I don't believe we're, I haven't never seen.
One B. A planning and zoning committee report.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my name's Debbie Rogers, I'm the president of Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and zoning met on July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. We had three applications. Little Messengers, Early Learning Center, that's at fourteen twenty-eight Cherry Ridge Road. It's really not a new business, the daughter took over from the mother. So we had to list it that way. Uh, Kirby Senior Health Agency, one fifteen North Franklin Street. Uh, that was where Attorney John Bentley's office was, and that's just a, uh, insurance agency. And then we had, um, uh, the gas station at nineteen twenty-one North Washington Street. That's across from Courthouse Leger. Uh, and the person was just selling to his cousin. So no real business changed there, just change of ownership. Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you.
I, I think the action that you take at this point is, you don't have to take any action, it's just that you're accepting the report. Uh, cause there was no action.
I like, well, we got a correction, we didn't go on record with a correction.
What, what, uh, I remember refer to that date.
Yeah, that date, yeah, we need to stay in record that, that we don't, that correction. See, that's why I don't know what your minutes are.
Yeah, so if you make a motion and there's a second for, for action on that, then that is recorded in the minutes, because it's actionable.
I like to make a motion that would, uh, accept financial report, did, uh, put in what was the necessary correction to item number sixty-one. That the date be corrected.
Okay.
Our second is motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Discussions? On the favor?
Aye.
In opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Rogers, that brings us to item number ten, reports of city officials or employees required by law of the action of a governing body.
Um, one thing, I know I've asked for reports, um, from code enforcement, monthly. I mean, I would like to know what's going on.
Uh, well, I'm just gonna reserve some of that for when we got to the hearings, but I'll do it here. Uh, so I've spoke, we had particularly, we had one issue involving a house that was, a tenant was supposedly involved in tire operations or receiving tires. I can tell you that the status of that is, is that I've, I've been able to get with the DEQ and Mr. McDuffie. And we are submitting a complaint on behalf of the city. There's, whenever you're taking in waste tires, there's three categories of people. There's what's called a generator. So a generator would be somebody who is an auto body shop, is a car lot, somebody who's taking tires off, they're generating waste tires. They're required to have logs of that, because all tires are logged in that are waste tires. There are then, the second category, which is called transporters. And they all have to be licensed as such, and there's requirements to them. And so a tire generator would then have a licensed transporter take those tires from them. They'd log in their book that those tires were received on X date, how many were. And that those tires were removed by this transporter. The transporter then takes them to a waste facility. The waste facility is the one who actually does the disposal, I believe the only one in North Louisiana. And I looked, uh, three nights ago, it was in Winsboro. I believe that's the only one in North Louisiana. Uh, what occurred was, is this individual was a, basically a tenant and they were underneath the auspiciousness that they were a transporter, at some point they either had a license or didn't have a license, they currently are not. There is no license registered to that person as a transporter. These tires were accumulated on the property, when the property owner took the property back over, there was several hundreds of tires. Uh, the, a property owner had reached out to DEQ, basically said, look, we will clean it up for you if you fill out this application, but we're gonna charge you a dollar a tire to do it. So at that point, uh, I am aware, because I have been involved in the prosecution of tire, of tire and DEQ violations. DEQ has a co- has an enforcement agency that comes out and investigates that. There's a failure somewheres in those duties where the transporter, either the generator of the tires gave it to unlicensed transporter, the transporter failed out on his duties, that he's required to take it to a waste facility to take care of it. In, in any case, somewheres in between the generator and the transporter is liability. DEQ needs to, uh, we're going to try and get them out here to investigate that, to begin the process of that. They will bill them with the, the party who is not in compliance with the law. So either the generator gave it to a transporter who was unlicensed, or the transporter failed in his duties, of which they will then go after which party is responsible and charge them with the cleanup cost that was associated with that. And so that's the goal, is to try and get that. On another avenue, I did speak with code enforcement regarding things. I let them know that, hey, uh, that look, we've, we've done the lien process, that we've started to have some success with liens and things like that. But that we need to start, uh, doing what I call a dual prong attack, because it's not having the effect that we wanted it to have. And basically, we were in the second phase of rolling this out, where we were going to start using liens to tell people to do this, or we were going to do it. The problem you have is, is that there is just a lot of properties, uh, as everybody is very well aware. And so at this point, I s- uh, asked code enforcement if they would begin to, not only whenever they start doing the lien process, if that property is occupied, please start sending those people to environmental court, we'll try and do a dual, dual prong attack. Not only will we go in and do the stuff if, if we can, uh, as far as cleanup or things like that, to the normal, non-consensual way, where we don't have to have their consent, or we don't have to have a hearing officer in environmental court. So, but then we'll also bring that individual to environmental court, so that the environmental judge can talk to them, tell them this is what's going on, can assess additional fines. And at that date, we'll have the bill from where we cleaned up to say, hey, they need to also be a judge to pay this bill. And if they continue to allow this thing being disrepaired, then they can be in contempt.
How many citations have been written?
You know, I asked for a report on citations, I don't have the amount of citations. I asked for the last sixty days. It's my hope that I can get a report on what the last sixty day citations are, I asked for it. But I just think at this point, we need to go with a dual prong attack, where we also take these people who have occupied properties. The issue is unoccupied properties always present, nobody's here to present, that's just going to be, you're gonna have to do it yourself. And wait for tax to come back, if it comes on the tax bill. Uh, I hope to have an update that tells you how many we have going to environmental court, because, uh, we should have, and I'm not going after people for blighted property, because there's, there's just, the only difference in declaring a property blighted is, is that it requires you to have thirty days notice on it. That's just too much time. We need to get people into court, environmental court as quick as we can. So I can get them in there as fast as, uh, five days, as long as I'm not. A blighted property declaration only simply cuts down the redemption period for taxes from three years to one year. That's it. And so that, that, that term is not significant enough to, to keep us from having them go into court immediately within five or ten days notice. I'd rather have the five or ten day, uh, ability to do it in thirty days.
There's no way that those tires should accumulate like that at that place of business, when we got code enforcement. That is totally unacceptable. This is not on the inside, this is on the outside. About three hundred, four hundred tires just everywhere, and nobody says anything about it. It's time to put baby seat code enforcement and the required code enforcement to really do code enforcement. Because I'm, I'm well aware of the situation that you're talking about. If I show you a picture of that property, and it's on a, it's on a main street, highway, it's on a main street inside the city. That is, I mean, I don't know how to say it, that is unacceptable when we got code enforcement in the city of Bastrop. And to Ms. Tapp, she asked to question, and we've been asking it over and over and over. And you're the city attorney, you're a brilliant job, but you keep telling us the same thing coming from code enforcement. Is if you can't get it from him, the council can't get it from him, the report, who can? We done requested a report, every city council need, and you even stated yourself, you have asked for the report. And we haven't received a report yet. We get answers, legal answers, really soundly, nothing's being done.
Okay, I think we can, uh, we can get a report generated, um.
That's all we asked for a report, it's probably, it's probably gonna be these thirty days in a month. And we talking about one or two properties. Let that sink in.
Well, we get a general report, that you're, you're speaking of generating. I like to know really the number of elaborated houses throughout the city. Number of grown up lots throughout the city. Uh, and any abandoned vehicle, I think we have a abandoned vehicle lot too, and, and so I can see a car sitting in your yard and different things like that. One way to get a full report, because one way to get a full report on those houses, the burnt out houses and elaborated commercial buildings that, that burn out as well. And I think from my training this mon- this weekend, I learned that there's help on the state level. I mean, we, we, we have, we, we, other word, the state will help us fund, fund this fight against elaborated property and different things. I know we, we don't have the money, do they cost money to tear down and go in? But I was very impressed at the meeting that they, that our funds available for municipalities. And I think if, once we can get a list, get a committee going and, 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 and apply for this money, it will come in and clean up, help clean up. You know, we gotta clean ourselves up too, but help clean up some of the stuff that we can't afford to do, because it do cost money to do almost anything. And, uh, if we can get some financial help, uh, from the state, or the federal, I think the state and federal, if we can get financial help from one of those agencies to help clean Bastrop up, it'll be beneficial. Again, the code enforcement should generate that information. I think that was Mr. Green saying, and, and, and Mr. Tapp as well. Uh, let, uh, let's get a com- maybe we might need to get a committee, maybe some help, I don't know. But we, there's a lot of stuff out there that need to be cleaned up, purified in Bastrop, before we can move forward economically, before anybody can move in. Before anybody can move in. And, uh, I think that's one of the things, let's gather some data before we can submit for help. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. Let's get the data together. Let's say, hey, we got so many, you know, so much help that we need. Houses, grown up lots, get some data together, then we all know which way to go with it. I think we're good on fifty city overall.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on to, may that put us ahead. Item number eleven, action on warrants and resolutions introduced at previous meetings. Karen Jones. Item number twelve, other unfinished business. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
First of all, when we talked about doing a SWAT analysis by the police department earlier. Doing a SWAT analysis by the police department earlier. We was already supposed to be doing a SWAT analysis. But the problem is, we say we're gonna do something and it never, it it stops at first base. Now, we, we said we're gonna do an analysis about trying to. Nobody ever got back with us about the SWAT analysis by the police department, seeing was it gonna be feasible. Another thing that's unfinished business is that they was gonna do analysis about the red light on going to the high school. We haven't heard anything back from that. Another thing, I'm just saying, this unfinished business, we, we need to just, we need to make sure that we follow through on what we say and just not say. And kind of perplexed because about a year ago, we was up here talking about. Security lights, cameras in the city. Can we do, uh, where are we at with the cameras? Nobody supposed to get back with us whenever they went up. But I don't know if the cameras are up, they, if they up, they must be toy cameras because crimes have been committed. We don't, I mean, I'm, I'm, these are some of the things that you probably can't answer right now. But I'm just saying that you said unfinished business. We want, we want answers to because they said you was gonna do analysis of it, not you personally. The administration was gonna do analysis of it and there's no see-through. We, nobody ever get back with the council and I don't know what they used to do. But now we want some accountability. We just not gonna just say, okay, we gonna do it and never swing back to it. It's two or three more things, but I'm just starting off with those things. Because you said, like over there by the high school, I've never heard anything else back from it. You're doing another SWAT analysis by the police department. We ain't haven't heard anything from the first SWAT analysis. Can we, anybody tell us where we at with that? If I, I just go one by one. I know I threw a lot of stuff at you at one time. Are we in close to, uh, have we began doing the analysis on the police department? Seeing was it feasible to get it back twenty-four hours a day?
Okay, I think, uh, Chief Reed answered that question in terms of what, um, the law says. To operate twenty-four seven, but the radio room is open now twenty-four seven.
Okay, Mayor, Mayor, I'm pretty, uh, uh, I'm, I'm saying that, you saying what Chief Reed said. I'm saying, you said, the administration said, yeah, we was gonna do a SWAT analysis. Have we started the process of seeing was it feasible or not? Have we started, have we contacted any outside agency to come in and say, hey, this is what we need to do? To get our police department up and going. Have we started the process? Are we still in the beginning stages?
Okay, I spoke with, um, Adrian Bordalun, who's the state examiner. Adrian Bordalun, state examiner for civil service today on another, um, issue. And she said across the state, recruiting officers is a problem. It's down in so many municipalities, so it's not just isolated to Basta. And she said, Mayor, I truly understand. She said, test scores down. And and as you know, we do have to abide by the civil service regulation. So we're not just isolated in in your concern in terms of recruiting police officers. And as best as I can say, we can make announcements, we can, we can go on recruiting tours. Or or be present at, um, work fairs. But it's just a problem across the state, um, across the state, excuse me.
Well, then we're ahead of officers. Okay.
Yes, sir.
I think, let me rephrase the question.
Okay.
I'm not talking about police officers.
Okay.
A SWAT analysis is when they go in and they see what it's gonna cost to operate a police department. I'm asking a question.
Okay.
Have we contacted any outside agency? Are, are we in the process of seeing what it's gonna cost financially? Not just manpower to get the police department up and going twenty-four hours a day. Not, not the manpower, I'm talking, you talking about recruit. That's totally different from, okay, if you do a SWAT analysis, you gonna, we already know how many it's gonna take to get the police department up and going. We're talking about physically and financially. What is it gonna cost and what is it gonna take? Because the first time we we shut our jail down was a, it was a financial deal. That's when we shut the jail down. That's when we trying to make sure it don't happen to our police department. So that's why you gotta have numbers. And we didn't recommend this, the administration said. When we asked about giving them a raise, they said we was gonna do a SWAT analysis and to see what it's gonna cost. And nobody have ever gotten back with the city council on it. So I'm just gonna ask again, have we started the process of a SWAT analysis?
Okay, I'll task Chief Reed to provide the information in writing until you ask your request.
Yes, will.
Okay.
I have something. I had, I have a couple of requests. I had asked, um, I want to know the amount that each department head turned back into the general fund. I want to know that amount and also we asked for an attorney general opinion regarding the powers of the mayor and the council. Has that been seen?
So, as to the attorney general opinion. There's going to be an attorney general's opinion regarding the mayor's and the power of the council. The issue was how broad to write it. And I think the decision that comes before us is that I think what we need to put in there is. Several questions, one of which is is a specifically very key charter provisions. We've, we've talked extensively about the one that talks about the hiring and firing of personnel and where does it lay at. There's several other provisions that conflict or ambiguous. And this council and 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 Ms. Tappin and Mr. Green and Mr. Bradford, even the mayor, y'all are very seasoned. You, you, y'all know about attorney general's opinions. So I think I want to bring a, a draft opinion, a draft question list. Because there's so many places we could go with and you know how they are. They want you to kind of narrow it down. And I've talked with them about how to narrow the scope of this. Because if we just sit down there and say, hey, our charter is here, the Larson Act is here. Where do we play at since it could either be silent or it could be in conflict or it's not spelled out with the way the procedure goes. So I would like to, in talking with them, in talking with the legislative auditor's office. Who tends to issue a lot of white papers regarding it with the consent of the attorney general regarding hires and things like that. I wanted to be able to bring a proposed letter down there because it was generally, everybody jointly agreed, said, hey, let's see. Be able to bring it to you and say, hey, what's the scope that they would be willing to accept before they say, hey, that's just, can you, can you bring it down some? Because they're gonna call me, a- as y'all submitted attorney general law before, they're gonna call me and say, how do I bear this down? And I'm really bringing to them the questions of the council and mayor. So I want to be able to make sure that we're, have our narrowly defined scope. But not so narrowly defined that we miss something that's critical to the board. So it would be my hope to bring to us a letter, a proposed letter that we say, yes, this is the one we want to vote to send down, to send there at the next meeting. I was trying to get clarity from the legislative auditor and the attorney general's office on. These twenty questions too much is asking you to look at our charter and the Larson Act and tell us which ones are which. What are critical key areas? And I received some good correspondence on that and how to get that scope. Because there are, there aren't many provisions that you could either say are silent, kind of as I said that. You could either say they're silent or you could say they aren't silent. Where would it fall at? And not get us to this thing that says, hey, we're not gonna issue a preliminary opinion because you really just need to. If there's something very specific. So I was able to get a scope with them that would get us the maximization out of that opinion. It would alleviate concerns with the council and with the administration that we can get together these questions. Because ultimately, I'm putting forth questions that were proposed by the, by the city council and the administration together. It was just a lot more scope than where do we stay at with this? Because there are several provisions in there that everybody has expressed in these meetings and in dialogue with each other. And there was some clarity with the attorney general with where they were in relation to where the legislative auditor was. And so it would be my hope to bring that letter to y'all at the next meeting. I received some clarity middle of last week when I got some clarity about how much scope would they entertain before they just say, hey, y'all just go to court. Uh, and so I didn't wanna get down there and have that. I also didn't wanna get to a point where I submitted something, they called me and said, hey, you gotta narrow this down. And then I'm sitting here trying to narrow down something that is not, I like to think that. Uh, I would know what, what y'all intend to recommend. But that's also something that I'm just a vessel, uh, I'm bringing it for y'all through, through the city attorney office. So I wanna make sure that I am clear about that before I go clarifying concerns that were expressed by the council and the mayor for clarity and all things. And so that's, that's really where that was. It is different than most attorney general's opinions where we're saying, hey, can we get attorney general's opinion on this limited issue? Like when we had the city attorney issue, there was very limited, very limited scope. Uh, this is a very broad one, so I wanted to make sure we can get something that came back and said, hey, it's just too general. Y'all need to figure it out.
Go again, Mr. Bradford.
I, I, I wanna know, I'm finished, we spoke of, what's the status of the McPhee Bridge? And McPhee and the divisions, bridge. Uh, we have heard, nobody got back with us, uh, what, 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 where are we at on that?
The bridge is, um, ready to be let out for bid.
And what, what, is what?
Mr. Orm, that project is ready to be let out for bid.
You know, we go out to bid?
They go on the agenda as quickly as possible.
Okay, and my next question, we, we passed a five point some billion dollar street grant. What's the status of that? I, I, I'm thinking the bondsman told, we receive the money within ten days, it's been thirty days. Has that money been received and, uh, what bank account was it issued in?
Could get that information for you?
Okay, and my next would be on the Fairfield, that's the Fairfield Street. Where the water was going in, when it rain, heavy rain, which Mr. Jones, I think his name were, came before the coun- council. And asked, uh, when we're gonna do it? And I think we put the Highland Street and Country Club road on hold. But I see they're working over there again and and, don't get me wrong, working over there again where we hadn't dealt with the Fairfield. What's the sta- what, what, where, 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 where are we on the Fairfield project?
Okay.
Do, anybody know, anybody can answer?
Will get that information too?
Okay, my next question, maybe we can, maybe you can answer it without hand. How many departments do the city ba- Basta have? How many departments, I know we, how many operating department do we have in the city of Basta? I mean, how many departments do we have? They could somebody name them for me.
Okay, we'll, we'll provide that information as well.
I mean, that, that can't be, someone should know that rather than hit, uh, how many department we have. I mean, we don't have to go, I mean, that keep the can down the road, man.
You have a series of questions, so I'll, um, it's home, I'm gonna say I can't answer.
I mean, I'm sorry.
You have a series of questions, let's just make sure we keeping up with the, the questions that you won't answer.
Okay, and I, I like to add though, soon because we're in the project, process of budget talk. And I, I remember the city, I said this, I remember the city of Bastard have so many department heads. And with the city being a little more effective, then we cut back and only department heads and join them together. But I think all is for us to maintain our city, we, we need, we need more, we need to really see how many department heads we need. And we need department head and our project managers. We need department head where they can be accountable to come before this council and be accountable for what we pay them for. Now, now, I think I have one more. Uh, I noticed Ms. Goldman, who had retired, in the building working several ti- I, I, several times I came in, she was working. Can someone explain why she's here, working and what she's doing here, or she on payroll or, or what could, can, can that be counsel to the Basta man? Is she volunteering on payroll or what, what is she doing in clerk office? She, she officially retired. Is she still on payroll or? I, I just wanted, I, I, I'm embarrassed.
Ms. Goldman is not present in this meeting tonight. So you feel free to call me, Mr. Bradford, I'm more than happy to answer your question.
Okay, okay, uh, I can't get answer for that. But let, let, let me. I mean, you're true not answering me, but, 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 see that's some.
Let me clarify that, Ms. Goldman is not present in this meeting.
I'm not asking Ms. Goldman, I'm asking you, you here.
She is not present in this meeting and I'll be more than happy to have a conversation with you, you call me.
Okay, well, well, let, let me, let me go a little further with that. Because I, I, this is my, I spoke to several councilmen and, and, and we have a new clerk, Ms. Austin here. And I think it would be better, if she, if she training, I don't know if she training or what it is. I mean, you don't have to answer me period, but, but I got enough comments in the picture, she doing something here. Uh, and Mrs. Austin is our new count, our new clerk. I think that she should be given an opportunity to set her system up to the day technology. We, you know, instead of her system, go ahead and find out what she need to do because if it's training. She been there forty years. And Ms. Hong this year, so many years. Other word, let, let, let these employees, the treasurer, the clerk, the tax collector. Let them create a system that they can operate on, but we can do things different. I think when we do things different, we can be more effective. We can't stand the same, uh, uh, you do the same thing, you say you get the same thing. Other word, let them learn. I know they knew, I, I have more passion with them learning than a person coming in. Teaching them something the way they used to do things and this or that. And, 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 and then you send a report down to, 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 uh, Luke down there at State Auto saying, well, part of, we want, we not on time with all of it. Because some medical, uh, project she might have had, I'm not gonna go into that for sure. Some legal medical thing.
I think, I think, I think, Mr. Bradford, I think we need to, uh, curtail that conversation.
Yeah, 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 well, well, I'm trying to go tell the mayor, but we, what I'm trying to say, I want the, the city, the, this community to move forward. We, you know, we can't do the same or things, but anything different. And I want especially to the council, I want especially to the public. I mean, we can all talk behind closed doors and whistle, but right and right, these are taxpayers' money I hear and they concerned by. I have one thing I'm leaving alone. I think I spoke one time at a meeting, I remember dating men. About giving the council more role in city government. See, you, because, yeah, technically, because if, if, we should be a council office upstairs. But people can call their council and we can meet and, you know, and other word, we gotta be transparent and meet and, and, and do things. And, 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 and a fashion and form where it can be effective for the city. I like to be more effective in my district to my, to my tradition, and I'm sure everybody is will. But we don't get down to the last end, then we have to go through the table. You know, that's, that's one thing that I think we should maybe consider. I know we spoke of. Because I was very disappointed, I'll use the term upset. But I found out that Ms. Vicky Carpenter, well, she's not here either. Okay, Ms. Vicky Carpenter was able to get a work, a work order from, 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 uh, Mr. Orm. Just clean up something here in front of the city. Just clean up something here in front of the city hall for make management, but here I am sitting here as a council, I can't get nothing, clean up nothing on McPhee. I can't come to, as soon as, uh, as soon as I need a work order to clean up this debris or to clean that or to cut that. See, we gotta do everything in respect and decent and order. Now, this is, this old, this old business, we discussed it once before, I have forgotten that and I won't forget it. Because it's really disappointing for a councilman to sit here, service of the people and we can, we got grabs, we got labelling houses. All the stuff, we all know potholes, uh, drainage dishes and I, I can't come here and say, well, can you fix the. Can you, can I get a purchase order to fix, uh, the removal of debris over here on McPhee or whatever street it might be, the bid or Washington? And we got private citizen coming here requesting purchase order, that ain't the way the city government should run. I'll say this once and for all, I'm saying again and express every time I think about it, it upsets me because that tells me they have no respect for the elected officials in this community. This, because they did, they were here now, they were given more responsibility, like I say, some cities have, well, well, ultimately have offices. Where they can, where people can leave their information here and we can take the necessary action. We need more input, the ultimate need more input in city government and buster, I'm gonna leave that right there. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
I believe one particular issue you're speaking of and then we'll move on is that was a referral, it was not, uh. Actually, the way that occurred and getting a referral to perform a task is one thing. Okay, let's move on.
Wait, 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 you say you're gonna crack the record, the record, man, I mean, what you mean?
A referral, and I don't want to get any.
No, no, she got a purchase order, I have a copy of it, she have a purchase order. She, she requested a purchase order from Mr. Oring and he signed for it, I have copies of it, I didn't throw it away. I have copies of it. I, I don't refer, he, she had, he actually issued her a purchase order and, and the gentleman got paid, Mr. Leonard, what I'm gonna get to, got paid. But he's not a city employee, but we have city employees on payroll for sixteen truck and we can cut in front of the courthouse, I mean, in front of our own city hall. Home should be probably on the first.
All right.
Nobody asked my question about the cameras, I mean, it's a safety issue and I was just wondering, because we. We spent like hundreds of thousand on, on some cameras and I'm just wondering, about six months ago, they said it was gonna be thirty days, so. I'm just kind of wondering where we at on the cameras, are, are, are they up because, you know. We already, they've already been paid for, so I'm just, and it was like six months ago, they said thirty days, so I'm just trying to see where we at with the cameras. Not trying to know the location, I'm just saying, are they up and functional?
Okay, there, there were some issues in terms of, of placement, uh, getting permission, whether they can be placed on state, uh, poles, um. Energy poles, but we'll get that information, be glad to get it for you, there were some delays. But it came down to placing them and where you could place them. And I believe the state weighed in on, um, prohibition they may have, but let me get accurate information.
Okay, we, we're working on it now, we're trying to get more than issues.
Yes, sir.
I have one of the, one of the requirements, since you gathered information. Uh, AT and T. Have a tile over by the minister's center. And I was in, lack of you, this is information, they paying the city ambassador monthly? For the, that tile to sit on the city property, I never see it nowhere in the revenue budget where it come in, could you get that information on that tile for me? AT and T supposed to be the owner, we ring that to AT and T, they give us, I'm, I'm saying nine hundred dollars per month. They're supposed to go towards park and recreation department for our parks, I'd like to have the information.
Yes, sir.
That, that, why, why you gather information, would, would, you get a note, y'all get a note on that? You got that, you got that?
I'm relying on, um.
Oh, hold on, no, you're, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sitting down in the audience while I keep it with the eye was over there, Jim.
Okay, then you're great, you do a fine. I'm sorry, I'm just sorry, I forgot to do that. I like, I like, and then we'll make you too. We go, let's, let's, let's go around, we received nine hundred dollars a month, that's close to ten thousand dollars a year and we need to know why it's not going into our parks. As, as required, I mean, I don't know where it's going, I'd like to get it in problem. That's my request, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, that brings us to ordinance twenty four, forty two, seventy nine, establishing the finance committee and rules there in Attorney Jones.
This is the finance ordinance that we discussed earlier, this is the introduction of it. It is introduced, uh, it's introduced tonight, it's been discussed for a while, it'll be advertised by title. Uh, there is some amendments that will occur prior to that, those amendments do have to be reduced to writing prior to being voted on. There are things that. We've all been working on and, and discussion about, you know. What's the scope, what needs to be necessary in it, what's the membership look like, things like that. That, but the title that is advertised is sufficient to put the public on notice of what's being voted, so we can make those amendments as we. As we go along to the next regular meeting where we can vote on it after it's been advertised. The, you, you advertise and publish the title of the ordinance. And then we can cooperatively work on this as we go forward. And at the next meeting, the idea would be is that we'd be able to adopt it in a form that everybody's kind of been able to work on it, add input to it. And work together to spell out the scope, the duties, the advisement responsibilities of, of places and people. One thing is, is that we've discussed, uh, it was discussed in the finance committee earlier, is that. There will be, you know, budgets presented and Ms. Flowers presented that, hey, look, uh, will, will be. The books, uh, and with Ms. Austin, the way she's been able to keep up with things and get things done. Is, is that the books will be in such a state that we will be able to present them year, monthly to show year to date on budget. Of which the council, uh, the finance committee, if they were to see something was five percent out of adjustment as far as the budget act requires. That they can make a written report or recommendation that, hey, there needs to be amendment, just as much as the administration can. And, uh, and that's how the budget typically functions, but it's, we'll spell out the duties within the budget act that each, uh, individual and party does. That, that is, those things are currently conveyed in the budget act, there's just not clarity, it's kind of like how. Uh, I guess pulling an example tonight, Ms., uh, with the planning and zoning came up here and gave the report, she presented a report to the board of the things. Those are all spelled out in the planning and zoning ordinances, how that board functions, what, what is to be reported here. Kind of similar how we've done over pri- pattern and practice, everybody kind of just says something about what is the finance? What was the decision of, are the questions that were developed in finance committee, but there's not a central point person, although we have a chairman at this point. It will. Bring formal structure into that formal reporting, so it looks more similar to what we have with. Uh, planning and zoning and other words like that, so that it's streamlined, so everybody is aware and knows what's going on. And can say, okay, make sure this is in our report that we're gonna convey and that we're gonna accept.
Are you saying this committee is being formed to, uh, bring more accountability to our finance, uh, our financial situation, operation?
Yes, we, we've, we've never had, I have had a specific finding before that put us on non-compliance list in other municipalities and said, hey, look. There's not checks about, we haven't had that, we have had things that have said, hey, you know, there needs to be, uh. There needs to be separation of duties, which is a common finding for audit purposes, it doesn't like that, but this. The more people you have looking at a budget and, and how it's going along throughout the year, the, the easier it is, there's a lot of things that occur, so this is. This is formalizing transparency on everybody's end. That people are having, not only is the administration having dialogue, but also council members are having dialogue and, and receiving that information. Without us having to write out each year, yes, we did present this, this was done. Uh, this will show the minutes and everything will show that this occurred in finance committee, these were the formal actions. It gives you the formal rules to it instead of playing by the kind of unsaid rules of baseball, as you could say.
All right, so thank you, I think that goes to what you were speaking of earlier, Mr. Daygreen. With, uh, Mr. Jones, Attorney Jones, just saying, hey, um.
And we've, we've worked.
Two, the, and this.
Yeah, and we worked hand in hand, uh, you know, and Mr. Green and I have had, a lot, Mr. Daygreen and I have had a lot, a lot of discussion about, hey. Uh, let's, let's, let's look here, he's looked at some ideas, looked there, to make sure that we have everything spelled out, have also had dialogue with the auditor's office regarding. You know, what does this look like so that we stay within the bounds of everybody, because there is ultimately, there are a few laws that kind of set the boundaries, which is the budget act and then your separation of powers. And so we want to make sure both stays within the boundaries, but also convey clear, concise, uh, that this is, that the financials are transparent going forward. So that we don't deal with, uh, kind of stuff we've dealt with over the last twelve months.
All right, that brings us to Hyland B, resolution twenty four dash twenty seventy three, a resolution amending the consolidated budget general fund. And all special funds for revenues and expenditures for the city of Basha, Louisiana for the fiscal year beginning July one. Twenty twenty three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And adopting the consolidated budget general fund and all special revenue funds for revenues and expenditures. For the city of Basha, Louisiana for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion.
Um, could, could I say, Attorney, before we do the motion, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Let's show we're in compliance. Okay, we can't table it. It have to be rejected because if we table it, then we're gonna be in non-compliance, so we have to. We have to, uh, make a motion in second and then if you're gonna turn it down, turn it down, we just spoke with Ms. Flowers earlier. And there's some things that she gonna go back and redo in, in this, in this kind of, uh, thing, so I think what we need to do is. Make a motion and, because we got, you can't, you can't table it, we're gonna be in non-compliance, right?
Well. Yes and no.
And the ordinance, and it's, this is a ordinance, right, so if one person over here vote, it's no. Automatically gonna fail because you, you just said the resolution is different from a ordinance, it's the majority of the board members when it comes to res- when it comes to ordinance, right?
This is a, this is a resolution and it's, it's titled as a resolution, I will look at the body of it, the adoption instrument appears on the face of it to be a resolution. It, I'm looking at the official one, it is done as a resolution, so you can do it by the majority vote of the, the members present. There is. It comes down to this on amendments, you can, what was advertised and what was brought here today wasn't the correct procedure as opposed to what we had before where we had. There was an issue with the, there was a requirement of fund balances on there. Everything's present that needs to be present in all the instruments. If what you're talking about is an adopt, is holding off till possibly have some amendments. As long as those amendments aren't substantial, uh, and substantial generally speaking means that they cause a five percent increase or a five percent decrease from what was advertised in the. The budgets that were advertised, I don't. I don't foresee that you have a problem tabling it because it's not, it's not the same mechanism. It's that you're just asking for the clear, I don't think you have the same issue you had before. Which was that tabling it was just tabling it to get some more numbers renewed, to get some numbers, get some things added in. It depends on what you're trying to do to alter it, that would probably be just positive of that. And, and one thing that was, that was brought up in finance committee was is that there is a twenty three, twenty four budget that was on there to be amended. And the overwhelming question was, and, and I do this for, for public clarity, but for also for clarity for everybody who's there, because sometimes we get to talking. Is the twenty three, twenty four revised is based on, the budget is submitted, that is a written recommendation to amend the budget to reflect. That there was a five percent, uh, increase or decrease to any of those fund balances, so that is a written recommendation by the administration to make that amendment. The overwhelming thing is, is that that can be, that amendment by law, it needs to happen, but you can make it with the, the caveat. That you're not ratifying anything that occurred through the year, you're just amending it simply to comply with the budget act.
Well, see, the finance committee, when we spoke with Ms. Flowers, she didn't real, she said she was not aware that the law changed almost the first. Yeah, and had to, that it had to include the marshal office, so she was not aware of that, so. So that's what we talked about, she gotta go back and make some amendments to this until, and we spoke at the committee about it and it's. Several other things that, that she said she was not, you know, that they just gonna go back and try to.
Correct, I, I, so to get to the city marshal, I'm aware of what the, the, the budgetary request that was made by the city marshal. I don't think that's gonna bud you five percent up or down, uh, based on what the budgetary requests are, so I don't think that one's gonna alter whether you table it or not for purposes of. Of getting in violation of anything, I think you could table it to make one that shows it differently because. There are things in there where the salary, so currently the salaries are placed. In the administrative category that need to be, the finance committee and everybody's discussed, hey, can we just break that out? Into this is her salaries, kind of like parks and recreation, somebody brought that up, can we just put it down like that?
Well, can we table it, I recommend we table it till we get back with this flower, she said she's going.
I didn't, I didn't hear anything in the finance committee that if you wanted to table it, that we couldn't do it in an amendment. The problem we had before was this one, the procedural mechanism for which the budget got here. Uh, was that the original advertised budget didn't have the fund balances on it, so. Tabling something that, that was, that was not gonna be able to be adopted, even if untabled, uh, the action was always going to have to be based on law. That it was going to have to be, uh, it was, you couldn't approve it. I think with the way that I've, the discussions I heard, nothing in there causes concern that if you were to table it. Because the amendments that you're talking about, I, there's no more, there's not a five percent, uh, up or down adjustment, even if you took the budget for the marshal at whole. Or not, it's not gonna budget five percent. The other items were categorical items about, can we break it out in different ways? That's not gonna do a substantial operation, you can do that in what we call an amendment that would be proposed that night, uh, that would be amended. It's not substantial in nature, I don't think you run into the same issue we had before, if you wanted to table it. Not to go around my Sally and Suzie's house, but that you kind of have to get down to the heart of what's it being tabled for. And based on what I'd heard in there, I, I don't think you'll have a problem tabling it for that, for that reality to occur.
Okay, what is your pleasure on resolution twenty four dash twenty seven three? Yes. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Count motion.
Say a second.
I have a count motion.
You wanna withdraw your first?
Uh, so if, if there's motion, the, the question before the board is, uh, there's a motion for a second. There's a motion for a tabling, if there is no second, then, then the motion fails. And then you would go to the next question if there is one to be presented by the board.
I have a count motion.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Tapper.
I motion that we go ahead and just reject this budget until we can get all our facts straight. Hopefully it can be represented next month, like I said, with the first time we met with Ms. Flowers today. And it's just a lot of missing information and she didn't know things we didn't know. So I make a motion to reject it and then bring it back up next month when we have all the, um, information.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
And opposed? Motion carries. I have seen revolution twenty four dash twenty seventy five fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty nine aviation priority program. Right, Mr. Brad, Elton.
Did you, did you do anything?
Did I ask you something?
Oh, it's on the committee board's order.
Did you say, President, I'm amending the common, B. I would read, okay, Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-three, resolution amending the consolidated budget. If that's what you just voted on, right? So C, Resolution twenty-four, twenty dash, uh, twenty-seventy-five, fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-nine aviation priority program.
I think, I think the one that was printed tonight is, is, is C on the one that was advertised is the, that Office of Debt Recovery Resolution. Yeah, cause I was just pointing that out.
Okay, authorized. I got a different agenda.
It's just missing the C off of it, but the one that was advertised was the one.
Mine has notes on it. I want you to, all right, C, Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seventy-four, Resolution authorize the mayor to contract with Office of Debt Recovery for collection of municipal debts. All right, turn it down.
Okay, so this is the Office of Debt Recovery, the A R A. This was, uh, this was created underneath the General Administration. And what they did was is, they, they just identified that the state had a lot of debts that were out there. This is back when we were having budget shortfalls in the legislature. So they got with the Attorney General and the Louisiana Department of Revenue. And I think they eventually, uh, somebody drew the short straw and it was the Department of Revenue who had to create it. They have an Office of Debt Recovery. It, it, what they do is, is they can recover any municipal, final debts owed to a municipality. Uh, they've consistently opened it up wider and wider as to what they can collect. And now it's pretty much anything that is a final debt that's owed to a municipality, you can contract with them. Now, you don't have to contract with them and you can just send it to them. I will tell you from experience, if you don't have that contract, they're gonna send it to you and say, hey, go ahead, sign this contract. Uh, all of them. The cost of this contract is of zero to us because as long as we send out the thirty-day, the sixty-day letter, they used to require them to be certified, so it would cost you roughly around, I think a certified letter is what, eight something at this point? They didn't allow, require that anymore. They just require it to be sent by ordinary mail. So you're gonna probably run a dollar mailing per letter if you count the stamp and the, and the letter in the paper in the title. But once a debt becomes final, let's say sewer, let's say you have occupational licenses that went uncollected. These are things that we had findings on before. Uh, you can even go as far as to start talking about, uh, traffic tickets where somebody was given time to pay and they missed. Then you can, that debt becomes final. Uh, we would have to, at that point, send them a sixty-day letter that says, hey, you have sixty days to pay this. If you don't pay this, then what we can do is, is we will send this to the Office of Debt Recovery who will collect it. When it hits thirty days, after that, we send a thirty-day letter to the address that was provided to us. And we say, hey, you have thirty days to pay this. The Office of Debt Recovery is going to collect it. Now, after the thirty-day mark, we put it in basically an Excel spreadsheet, they call it. And we can send it to them, upload it with the stuff, the information they need that's able to be gained either from the sewer application or the, let's say occupational thing, they can go after businesses. So another thing that you can look at is that we've been in active discussions in other places with this. Sometimes you'll have a business that closed down that reported they owed sales tax. And historically, you've had to go out and contract with somebody, pay them to go sue and do all this stuff. You can send the sales tax to them. Sales tax has personal and business liability. So you can put those in there, identify it's a business debt, what kind of debt it was, the date it went final, the amount it owed. You send it to them and at that point, you no longer have to collect it. It's off your books because it's final with you. Somebody contacts you, you just simply say, hey, you gotta contact the Office of Debt Recovery and they'll take your money from you. At that point, it, it takes it out of us and puts it into the Attorney General's, Attorney General and the Department of Revenue's office and says, they're the collector. The cost to us is nothing so long as we send out those two letters. If we don't send out those two letters, then they will charge twenty percent based on the balance we have and charge it to our balance owed. So as long as we send the two letters and we're willing to incur that, then they will then charge it to the person as an additional twenty percent added to the bill. They will then proceed to collect after them. What avenues can they take? They will send them a letter that says that if you have a driver's license, we will suspend your driver's license within thirty days if this is not taken care of by us. If you have a business license with the state, they can go after the business license. If you have professional licenses, they can go after those. They have reciprocal agreements with forty-eight other states to take income tax refunds. So if you get an income tax refund, they will put an assignment on it and that money will go to them. And once a month, they send you a check with basically registered, says here's all the accounts. Please note in your accounts, the balances have been, these balances have been paid down to these amounts. They can go after your bank accounts. They can send a garnishment letter out to an employer and say, hey, we're going to garnish you for this. Now, there are garnishment laws that say you can't garnish somebody who's making less than x wages. It's, it's about four hundred times the minimum, the minimum basic necessary needs level. That said, they can use a lot of avenues that do not cost us any money that historically, if we were to do it, it would cost us time, uh, if, at base minimum time and resources, at maximum possibly having the contract with what would be a debt collection attorney to do it for us. Either A, pay them a contingency fee or B, pay them, uh, per an hour to do it for us. So basically, as long as we're willing to send the letters and have this agreement in place, the cost to us is two letters. And then it takes all of our, what we call legacy final debts that we can use. And it offloads them to an agency that has, I, when I talked to them a month ago, they told me that they were contracted, they actually contract with private firms to do this. And that they had somewhere as an excess of, of five hundred plus, uh, attorneys all over the place doing this for them who are set up and this is their sole practice, is collection of debts. And if it's a big debt, they will send it to somebody who is, is seasoned in collecting debts that are, you know, five, six-figure debts, if there were things like that. Sometimes you get that with sales tax. We, we have a business that goes out there, what they had sales tax for a few quarters and last thing they do is, is they pay that sales tax. They say, yes, we did have it. Yes, we did collect it. And then they were sending the check. And so, and you can get everything as small as somebody who leaves a, leaves and, and their in-swear bills never paid. And it sits on your books uncollectible. It is something that goes into your audit each year. They say, hey, you have accounts receivable that weren't collected. Uh, those accounts now are no longer your responsibility. So when your audit comes through, if you're sending it to the Office of Debt Recovery, they consider that to be active collection. They consider that you are in good standing and you're pursuing those debts and you no longer have findings or issues related to outstanding municipal debts. So. It will go, so in some degree, it goes on your credit report. It depends on where it's at. There are some credit report standards on that, uh, that change here and there. I have not litigated a, a fair credit report, uh, case in probably three or four years. I, I did do a substantial amount of it and municipal debt is one of those things that can go on there. Historically, the reason why it did not go on there is because the cost to report credit to somebody's credit was extensive. And so municipalities generally got there by doing judgments. Because what happens is, is people come around and they, they will ask, private companies will come to the clerk down here and they'll record all judgments that exist and they'll put it in there as a reporting mechanism. So that's what we call an organic reporting. As far as actually direct reporting, I'm unaware of any misspotters.
That's what I was getting at. We can do it without.
Yeah.
Adversal effecting the person and getting our money. I think that would be.
Uh, really, and they have a really great collection rate. Uh, collection rates for our legacy accounts is probably as well as anybody who just remembers to come pay it. Or generally speaking, you find it sewer, they'll come back and they'll try and rehook up a sewer and they'll say, hey, you have a legacy bill, you have to pay it. Things like that.
My question to you, you say you spoke with them, uh, last month sometime?
Yes.
Okay, well, as you were speaking to, and this, this new to me, uh, what is the amount owed to the city of Bash? I mean, we've, we've been entered into a contract with a collecting agency. Nine, nine out of ten are gonna affect the citizens here in this community. You know, when you, when you put them in that predicament, collect, how they, they, when out of business, they show need hardship instead of more, more thing. But my question though, directly to you, what is the amount owed to the city right now in debt? And a couple, uh, well, do we have a, do you, you applied for it, you didn't check with the council anything on it. Uh, do, do you have a, do we have a very outstanding amount of debt owed to the city or moderate or high or low? What, 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 where are we?
Uh, I don't know what, how you consider it moderate, high or low, but I can tell you this in municipal, in debts that are owed to the city. It has been in the, it has been a finding in our audit for the last eight years at least that we have failed to pursue occupational license debt. We have.
Eight years?
Yes. That we have failed to pursue occupational license. It's in, it's in the current audit.
Don't, 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 now they have a lot of you, don't, uh, send out a letter within two years of a debt. You cannot collect it, uh, I mean, let's say it were two years expired and I got no notice or anything from you to collect the debt. Uh, after two years, you cannot collect that debt?
Well, that.
That's a law.
Well, it depends on what you apply to. You're talking about the laws on prescription. It's called liberty of prescription if you wanna actually look the book up. But there are numerous amounts of it. So one thing you have to do whenever you give it to the Office of Debt Recovery is, is you have to indicate the date that the debt was incurred and the date of last payment so that they can make that. Because if you do make a voluntary payment on a debt or a promise to pay, it can revive that prescriptive period. So you have to report that so that they can, they will then look at it. And if we have the report that comes back from them that says that, hey, this debt is prescribed, then at that point, that also clears out all of our books for us. So this acts as a cleansing mechanism for a finding that we've historically had. Now, in speaking with it, I didn't, I didn't make an agreement with them. What happened is, is I had this in another municipality in which we were trying to obtain one of these contracts and they simply, there was just nobody there to talk to us. In fact, I actually went to the Attorney General's office at Northern Exposure asking about, hey, can somebody please call us back? We've tried for about twelve months. Eventually I ended up getting in contact with this guy. I said, hey, I need the contract, the packet. They'd give this packet to you, but you can call down there and get this packet. I just brought the packet to the board because I felt that it was something that could possibly, uh, relieve us of a finding that we've had for a long time, which is the collection of occupational licenses. The flip side to it is, is that at some point we have to, uh, pursue those debts or we'll continue to get that finding. The other avenue is, is that I organically would have to go into court and then have to begin to sue them over it. And if I did that, I would incur all the court costs related with that, that's required of it. There is, but there is a prescriptive period for these debts. They will tell us if it's within the prescriptive period. If they tell us that it is prescribed, it is not expired or statute limitations, as you say, common law jurisdictions, then we can cleanse it off our books and then it's fine. But this gives us a mechanism to take one more find, one more audit finding off of our books.
Okay, I, I understand, I understand. I would just say, I, I just figured, I mean, it's been, like I say, altered, it's been on the book for eight years and we can't collect it anyway. I mean.
There is gonna be some period of where it thinks prescribed.
And, and we can't collect it and look like those who just went out of business, let's say someone opened up a mom or pop store and lasted a year and a half, two years and they had to close due to, like, that, that put them at a hardship because they couldn't sustain their business. I mean, then we put them in, we, we mess with their credit, we mess with their credit, we mess with their, you know, and, 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 and the system to maybe recover even faster. But they may have left even us a hundred dollars in tax, tax collect, but we're doing more damage to the citizens. I have to think of the long-term of the citizens. But so like, we're doing more term, more damage to the citizens of this community and, and, and businesses of this community than we are doing. But we, we, other word, I would always told you credit is more power than your money. Okay, if you don't have any credit, I don't care how much money you have. But let's say, uh, although we, we don't wanna put our citizens and our businesses in a disadvantage. And credit, I, I understand you saying we may need to collect, we, we see how, what we, our notice isn't, you know, and they disregard this or something, we can take it to government court. We, we does that, you know, we get, that's, that's the best way to get it out. Put them into a hardship position, you know, the, the jury gonna make them, and you, then you have to actually shoot the jury. There's a lot of money. I mean, they worth the money, why go through it? I mean, cause your time and the poor time and.
Well, you know, one, one thing you have to remember about all these debts is, especially with occupational licenses and things like that. Once that individual has a, has obtained that occupational license to continue to pursue things like that, they have, they have taken the step to incur that debt. Now, the business may have gone defunct, but it doesn't erode the, the beneficiary duty that we all have to the city that they contracted with the city and acquired that debt. And so debt collection's never fun. It's like tickets. It's never, it's never fun.
It's never fun.
There's never a nice answer.
Especially with occupational license because I think, uh, uh, you, I think if I recall, I think somebody helped me, fifty thousand dollars or less. I mean, we don't have many businesses that go out of business that make over fifty thousand dollars. We might have a church of chicken, I hope they pay, they went out, I can just name them, some of the places that went out of business in the last eight years. Uh, Kentucky Fried, I don't think they left all of us any debt. That's something we need to look into. We probably collect, collecting them through a garnishment procedure. But to put the citizens in the community in a hardship or debt collector, that's some, you know, we may look into more. I even, my, for, I like having more detail for my position. Because I like a, 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 a growing city.
Let's take it till we get more information, break it for us.
You know, it just, it's a quiet matter of.
I understand. We gotta hear, we gotta do it and then.
We gotta hear it now that if he's already.
Okay, um.
We'll, we'll get back into detail.
Purging, that, that popped in my mind, purging, the, the, purging the, the list first. Turn it down. Purging it and then taking it to the next level is, I think it's something that's worthy of consideration. Cause if you've got a business that hadn't been operating for the last thirty years and still carry on, I'm just throwing.
And that is one function they'll do whenever you put the date down there of what it is and when it was occurred. They purge that for you so that you don't have to do that. You can say, hey, yes, we can write this off. That's always a question you get with auditors. I've had it with Mr. Mashal several times. When do you write this off? And it's like, it's kind of, we got into the business of hiring another firm to give us an independent opinion that, yes, it was off. So if there was something incorrect, is that that was off, like that, that liability was offloaded to somebody. So the goal was to, to get something that could help people do stuff like that.
I think so, it could burn, you know, somewhere, it's, it would work while I'm doing, in other words, should.
Okay, so that, that was a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion to table this.
A second. Okay, any question? Sebastian, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay. That brings us to. Aviation, let me look at the other list.
Good evening, Councilman.
I was thinking, man.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm Brad Elton, I'm the airport manager here in Bash. And, uh, what we have tonight is we need a resolution, uh, saying that we, um, tentatively plan to do these five projects listed on our capital improvement plan, uh, sometime over the next five years. And this is a, a plan that we send to the FAA every year. And, uh, we work with the FAA to state to update this plan on a yearly basis. And they just want us to say, yes, we will try to, uh, do these projects with the funding that they give us.
I make a motion.
We, we now have a motion on the floor.
You submit the plan. I want to make sure I understand what you mean.
Okay, we, we now have a motion on the floor, so in a second, we'll get to the question.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Uh, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, second. Uh, Mr. Green and Mr. Bradley, go ahead.
On, on the, on the plan, do, have you provided with a plan, just, just a plan you want to submit?
Yes, sir.
Can you provide the city with a plan or?
Yes.
Can I see what, what the future look like? That we may land, uh, seven point seven is the future.
It's gonna be a long time.
Okay, I feel like if you have a copy, you can buy it with.
Yeah, we go over the next, uh, five years. So in twenty-twenty-five, what we're looking to do is some drainage improvement and utility relocations around the terminal building. And that'll be, uh, funding that we will use from the infrastructure bill that was passed a few years ago on the federal level. And that'll be uh funding that we will use from the infrastructure bill that was passed a few years ago on the federal level. Um, in twenty-six, we are going to do an airport layout plan update. And that will update basically our future uh growth estimates for the airport. You know, where we wanna put certain infrastructures, any buildings, anything of that nature. And they'll also update our title and deed, our property map, make sure that it's still correct and where all the property lines are where they should be. And that will also be using infrastructure bill money uh for that. And in twenty-six, the state has said that they will try to provide us funding to do a taxiway extension. We have a taxi lane off of our full parallel taxiway that stops before it gets to our parking. And so they're gonna look to make an extension so that it connect fully to the parking area. Um, let's see, in twenty-seven. We are going to have through our normal entitlement grants from the FAA. We're gonna do the design on the apron rehab, and apron is kind of the parking area for the aircraft. And then we'll roll over a little bit of entitlement back here. And in twenty-eight, we're gonna roll over uh more entitlements. So that we can save up to actually do the construction process phase of the apron rehab in twenty twenty-nine. And that'll, that is to be our next five years. And this plan is subject to change, it may come in next year when we meet with the FAA and the state, they say, you know what, we wanna change what we do with this money. So we'll, you know, make changes for you according to what they recommend.
I have a question, but I, it's my ignorance when I. Um, we, sometimes we fly patients out, so is the airport in operation twenty-four hours a day or?
Yes, ma'am, twenty-four seven.
Okay.
You said change over the years.
It can change with the, with the state and the federal uh program managers recommend.
They tell we need commercial flight, we don't grow.
All right, um.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, will you finish?
Yes, ma'am, unless there's any other questions.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any motion cares? Thank you, Mr. Elton.
Beer for next one today.
So do you look at somebody?
Oh, yeah.
You had another?
Just had one more.
Okay, that's, okay, that professional service engineer serves a master agreement for the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Okay, that's a resolution twenty-four, twenty-seven six.
Okay, so what this is, is every five years, the FAA wants us to have an engineer of record. So it's basically, we're gonna enter a contract with an engineering firm to be our engineer for the next five years to take care of the design and implementation of any projects that uh that get funded at the airport. And uh, so when we put out requests for qualifications, uh, the only respondent we had this time was a bulkirk engineer. And their submission met all the qualifications uh that we had requested. So I would recommend that we accept them as our engineer of record and sign a master services agreement.
Of course, I have, where, where are your engineers located?
They are located in Mundro.
In Mundro?
Yes.
It's the same one we use with City or the.
I believe they do a lot for the city, yes, ma'am.
They do a lot for us, yeah.
The formerly uh Denman Engineering, now.
For the same one?
Okay, I'll entertain, I'll, I'll resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven six.
I make a motion.
A second.
Okay. I probably move by Ms. Tack and unanimous. Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, F. That is a F. Hearing to show cause, Y, eight oh six, eight oh eight, eight eighteen, North Maribor, Basta, should not be deemed a dangerous building to struggle.
You say should not?
That, that was all.
Well, you have to, you have to say it in the negative.
Oh.
That's a, that is something that is unique to this state. So what we.
Wait, can that sit on something?
There you go.
I don't know, I don't see it near the table. Don't breathe. Um, does that car have wheels on it? We not have a car, just the extension to one. Can the car, okay, can that's?
I think we're good luck, everybody, everybody got a good idea.
We know where the property is.
I think I like most. So this is eight oh eight.
Sir, before you start, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, sir.
Me?
Yes, sir.
You remain judge.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, for the record on that, gentlemen.
Yeah, right.
That said, this is eight oh six, eight oh eight, and eight, eighteen, I believe, right. Maribor, North Maribor and Basta, these are three properties that are in the ownership, on the date that we had this owner in the ownership of, of the individual who had noticed, we have certified mail to them. We do have return receipts that I have for the record. These properties are in state of disrepair, I think the council is very well aware, I will, I will pass pictures around if there is necessary. There's people from the public who wish to see, however, some of the public members can probably tell you a lot more about what it looks like. These are in what I'd call a dangerous situation, there has been a, a report issued that these, due to the condition, fire, other things ruined. These are now what we consider to be dangerous buildings, meeting the Louisiana Revise statute for what is a dangerous or dilapidated building. Uh, this is a hearing before you tonight to uh allow the owner time to appear and show cause. I would ask that uh. That we would sound to see if there's, there is Ms. Robinson or anybody else who wishes to come forward for this hearing uh about this, considering notice was. I would ask that Ms. Robinson, who is the listed property owner on the date of this notice that was mailed, if, if she is present, that she would come forward at this time. I would note that I did not see anybody appearing to come forward and that that call is gone unanswered. At which point, I would submit to you the photos, the uh personal knowledge of the council, the recommendation that is done by uh the code enforcement. Uh, one thing with the recommendation in the written report of that is, is that we have the building inspector look at all of these buildings that are sought to be condemned. That is why there's sometimes a process in that, it's just, one thing is, is that the, we want to make sure that we are doing things in the proper manner. So we have the building inspector go out there and say, yes, this is a dangerous or dilapidated building as per not only our code, which embodies Louisiana Revise statutes specific to this, but that uh, that this meets the Louisiana Revise law also. That said, all these structures do, these structures are in need of being condemned, this is North Maribor, this is headed to our high school, uh, Basta High. These properties have been plaguing problems that existed, these are part of probably a larger group of properties that need action on them. Uh, these were probably identified because of the fact that we do have schools starting and we need to take some action on these. They're just in a severe state of disrepair uh that has rendered them dangerous or dilapidated in the main law. The notices are sufficient, the notice was registered in the clerk of court office, of which I have copies and showing the, the actual filing that's stamped when they're put down there in the conveyance records. The reason why they're put in the conveyance records is to put anybody on notice, it then later subsequently comes in order. Uh, then that these things are subject to a hearing, of which there was uh subsequent to our notice, the property sales tax on these things were sold as a tax sale to individuals, but our notice was prior to that date. Uh, so those people who bought, those are deemed to have been on notice because it was down there in the mortgage records as we have them, they are signed by the mayor. They were, they're on the command books down there, book seven thirty-five of the command's records, page two twenty-one. And there are three, there are a notice down there. We did all these properties underneath one notice uh because these are owned by these same individuals. Eight oh six and eight oh eight, actually, if you looked at the Tax Assessor's website, it's one piece of property, but at some point, we received two nine one one numbers. So what you think of as three properties is actually just one property uh with two buildings next to each other. Uh, so if you were to look at Tax Assessor's website, it'd show one piece of property, but it's actually two. They, at some point, they applied for an extra nine one one number, it was, was granted that municipal number. Eight eighteen is a little bit further down, I think there is three houses between it and it's there. They're identified by their parcel numbers, uh, at this point, I believe that it is proper and just for the board based on the evidence that these buildings do present a dangerous or dilapidated state and they should be condemned at this point. I would ask the council, uh, if action is to be taken, that action be granted to allow us to immediately uh go in there and do what is necessary to destroy these buildings or have them removed from the property to alleviate that.
I would say something before we do, if I could.
Okay, Mr. Green made a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, probably move by Mr. Green, second by Ms. Tack, any questions or discussion?
Um, just a little discussion, um, this is my district and I'm happy about this. It's an eyesore, just looks horrible on the main corridor going to the school, so when people visit, traveling to high school, this is what they see. So I am very happy that we are taking action and, and destroying properties like.
And to let you know with your district, I ha, I did have some conversation with some outside civic groups that were also going along. And there was some thought that possibly we, they could get this owner to allow them to do it and they had some dedicated funds to help out. They, they just reached an impasse and at which point, uh, you know, they kinda informed me that, hey, we're at an impasse, we, these are the things we can't deal with. They have had success with like two other homes on that street. And so once they reached an impasse, uh, which would have been the inefficient and effective way of the city because it required no expenditure of municipal funds for it, uh, once they reached that impasse, I just quickly had them noticed and, and put them on this hearing, because they are, as you can tell from the pictures, they are in a very dilapidated state and they need to come down. Uh, this is just going to attract new citizens.
And we thank those civic organizations for trying.
Yes, they did, they've been trying.
Okay, now, what's the plan of action? I mean, as you said, going in, I guess you got to cool upon the homes and, and what do all of us do?
Well, correct.
I, I need to know the plan of action, uh, how, how soon we gonna, the school start and they. Choose something, you spoke of school, what's the plan of action, huh? Who gonna, who gonna tear down and what, what, what's the city plan, are we gonna use our employees or, what, what's the plan of action?
Outside of legal, that's, that's, it really gets outside of my scope, I will say this, uh, you know, there, we can do it through, we have the authority in the statute to contract with somebody, now there is, a lot of people have asked me, and I will say this, I, we attended a community meeting, they asked about specifically side school. I said, hey, look, there's bricks there, there's all kinds of stuff, I said, here's the problem, we're not a private agency. We, we have the ability to go in and demolish things, we have the ability to go in and repair things. We do not have the ability to park peace or sell things or allow anybody to profit off of, because whenever they contract with us, they are performing a municipal function on behalf of the municipality. And so it kinda gets in that neighborhood, could you have this scrapped out, could you do it? Uh, no, you can't make profit off of it because it's not our property, it's incondemned, it has to be removed in a manner that's sufficient. So we are limited in those degrees, that's a long way to answer your question, who's gonna do it? I have no idea who's.
Okay, okay, I, I'm not much concerned about, uh, the contract, I mean, when I say plan of action, are the city gonna do it or we gonna contract someone out? And which contract someone out on behalf of the city, they gonna have to have insurance and make, to, to protect the city uh that they working on our behalf, but uh, we gonna use our city employee, I mean, what's the plan of action? This is good, I don't, I don't have a problem.
You know, and you don't pay me for my thing, but from a legal perspective, I would say that there's two avenues to go. Decide, decide if you can do it in-house.
In-house?
If, if you can't do it in-house, correct, if you, in-house meaning that you have s- some city department is able to do it, public works, something like that, I don't control any of that. The other avenue is, is that if, if that's not the feasible manner to do it or the most efficient manner to do it, my suggestion has been, and I suggested on other, other jobs, the side school, other things, uh, those were larger projects. The bid process is the perfect way to do it, uh, have, have people who want to do this, who. That, that way, you're not just going to somebody, as, as you and I both know, sometimes when a government agency goes to somebody, the, the price gets a little different because the government agency's doing it, so allow competitive closed bid, uh, blind bid process for people to do this, this would, this would give work to people. The cost, the cost to do this, we can recoup it through liens on the property. And if you had people who were probably submitting bids, you would have competitive processing of this.
Okay, well, well, in the short term, we can do, then we use the term in-house, the city, we can do with city employees as in-house. Or we could contract it out through a third party.
Yes.
Okay, uh, okay, again, are we at that stage, are we ready to do that, like to? How soon are we ready to do that, I guess my question, call, school start next week, I mean, I'm just concerned, how, how soon are we thinking about doing this? And what do you, legally, what do you suggest, the way we go, I guess, you know, turn it.
I suggest that, uh, one, how quickly can we do it, answer that question as soon as me and you get through discussing this and they vote. Uh, two, two is, uh. Uh, so, two is that we can, uh, my suggestion is to, based on the nature of these structures, uh, you know, we're not talking about one twenty-three North Washington, we're not talking about the, we're not talking about asbestos, we're not talking about the scope and spectrum, we're talking about small residential things. You know, look internally first and make a quick review, I think that's something that could probably happen quickly. I don't control public works, I don't imply that I have any knowledge of how public works works or how projects are done or what it takes to do one of these. Quite frankly, I've never destroyed one.
Okay.
But, or you can bid it.
Okay, I was, but, I, I like all, all, everything you're saying, but you didn't answer the question. Do we do, can we, do you, do you advise us legally to do it in-house or contract? I mean, because you just told me, soon we vote, I mean, we can do it in-house, we should have the equipment to do so. I guess, as well, I go up to public work, I guess that's who would handle it, I don't know who would handle it, with one eye department would handle. Do, do you suggest we do it in-house or you suggest we?
Which, whichever.
Contract, what, what do you legally, what, what is your legal advice, I guess?
Both ways are correct, uh, efficiency.
I say about correct, I'm asking which way you suggest legally, we do it, I don't know if you, they're correct.
I, I, what I'm trying to say is, is the most efficient manner possible, I don't know what the answer to that question is. Cause that, that takes into account a lot of things, but the most efficient manner possible, these are some of the most dilapidated buildings that we have.
The chair's position would be that, um, let public works take a look at, see if it's within their ability to do so. And if it's not, or it poses some type of risk, then we'll go further.
I was just gonna say about get, get public works to look, and last administration, they, they purchased some equipment just for that, but do, is it still operational?
That's why I said that, that's, that public works take a look at, make the assessment and determination whether it's within their, just on scope and ability to do so. And if not, we need to have to take the next alternative.
But it, whatever the, whatever the vote of the council is on to do this, I will have the order out, because there has to be an order, we have to get it signed by the mayor and then registered in the clerk, that would be out by the morning and we'd have it registered uh by noon.
I entertain a motion on, um.
I think we had a motion, we're just looking for a.
What issue?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any motion there? I, um, puts us on G. Puts us on G.
Good evening, once again.
Ricky Allen Anderson, Bastrop, Louisiana. I'm here to talk about twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. And since there was a lot of discussion pertaining to that and it was tabled, and I appreciate that because you have two important individuals who are not here that need to address this matter as well in reference to this budget. And there's a lot of more concerns about this twenty-four, twenty-five budget as well. Let me move on before we can get on out of here. This is a letter, August dated the second twenty twenty-four, to Ms. Diane Allison, the Director of Local Government Services, sixteen hundred North Third Street, Bandwood, Louisiana, seven zero eight zero two, telephone number two two five three three nine three eight zero zero. This is a letter of complaint in reference to the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, default and delinquency in filing the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget. In reference to this, our Ricky Allen Anderson, A D Solomon, resident of Bastrop, Louisiana, seven one two two zero, filed this complaint that has merit of facts. On June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, our Ricky Allen Anderson submitted a request, itemized budget review for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget fiscal year. This is a see attached copy letter that I gave to this board last month in reference to E four. It tells you about department heads. Let me move on. July ninth, twenty twenty-four, I received from the City of Bastrop, a fiscal year budget resolution twenty-four, twenty sixty-seven. Whereas on page twenty-nine of that resolution twenty, twenty-six, sixty-seven, under the Bastrop Police Department budget for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five in care of the Mo House Parish Sheriff Office patrol expense states for the month of May twenty twenty-four, zero zero ballots. Now, how could that be true when the Bastrop Police Department closed at six P M. And the memorandum stated an agreement on the resolution twenty-two nineteen ninety-three is still active? I cannot see, how could we not pay the Bastrop Mo Parish Sheriff Department for that particular month? How could we pay these people and there's no money down there for them, zero zero ballots? We spoke about that last month in July, I asked that question, there was no answer. That's the reason why I wrote this letter. Therefore, the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year budget resolution twenty-four, twenty sixty-seven failed last month. Our Ricky Allen Anderson requests that the Louisiana legislative audit appoint a state administrator to take up the daily operation management of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana due to the failure of submitting budget in a timely manner governed by law. I'm asking that no more extension be given to the City of Bastrop for any fiscal year budget. Twenty-one, twenty-two, that was due on April of twenty twenty-four. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget, that was due July twenty twenty-four. The twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that's due this December twenty twenty-four. And here we is on twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, have nothing been filed. So we operate on a fifty percent, ten percent of fiscal year budget, I don't know. I'm concerned about my taxpayer dollars. That's the reason why I filed this complaint with the Louisiana legislative audit. But they can send somebody up here to look at these books and find out who getting paid what and what they getting paid for. Yes, the Bastrop Police Department is open right now. But isn't anybody out there in the Bastrop Police Department patrolling right now? Yes, the Mo Parish Sheriff Department is still active with this twenty-two nineteen ninety-three contract. Mike Tug has never came up here and spoke to this board about nothing since he took over. Twenty or more or less homicides have been taken on his ship. This boy has a right to ask Sheriff Tug what this money doing and what he doing to protect his city. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Ms. Allison, I can't.
You might, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, Ms. Allison, on, on your letter here, and you definitely, I, I want to mention for your dates and accurate on your letters and stuff here. On your letters here, on your complaint letter, that's, that's to the Louisiana State Audit?
That is correct, it was Diane Allison, that's what we, I've been speaking with.
Okay, have we got to respond to your letter as we speak today? Have they been responding, if she responded to you, your, your complaint?
From my understanding, there is a presentation going on in reference to the state. And I'm gonna let the state tell you about it.
Okay.
I'm gonna let the state inform you about it.
Okay.
I just filed a complaint with the state. And they should contact you all. Matter of fact, they have spoken with you all last month, each and every last one of you. We asked those people to contact you all because the table for the mayor, the board don't sit at it. The table with the board gap, the mayor don't sit at it. Me and Mr. Whitmore, K W A D K T R Y, I've been speaking with Ms. Allison for the last two months about what's going on here. And she understand, we're not trying to shame this, the city, we're trying to get this city on board to do the right thing. But your question, sir, again, we asked the state to come in. That's why they got the police department open there. That's why, they're not gonna tell you everything. But somebody had to be here, people come out of town, got a problem, they see the police department, they go, it's closed. Somebody get hurt out here, they're closed, it's closed. I'm not trying to shame nobody. I'm worried about my taxpayer dollars, I'm double dipping with this man. I'm paying two protection for Mike Tug. I'm paying sheriff protection and then turn around and go and pay him city, to pay him to patrol the street too. Got it, right? Ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor, get it together. Get it together. Come to the table for the people and work this thing out. You're just going on two months in the, in, in your fiscal year. You don't have no finance board, how you gonna have a budget together? We got to work together. Money is money. With taxpayer dollars, y'all are stewardess, every penny belongs to be checked, every penny. I'm not trying to bring no harm or shame to nobody, not a man. I just want this parish and this city to grow right, but it's not going right now. You got a police department closed down, the criminals are running wild. There got to be some changes made. Next month, let's pass a budget that we all can be proud of. And all these previous budgets that you had not been filed, let's get them together. Because they gonna send somebody up here, they gonna find some discrepancy here. And they gonna appoint an administration and gonna run their daily operation here. Get it together.
I agree. Thank you, Ms. Allison. I just wanted to thank for this concern, this concern.
I understand, so I want to say something. Based on what you said, I've been doing research and I've been looking into what you're speaking about. And you, pretty much, you, you're right. I've looked into it, attorney, you know, we, we, we have been working, trying to resolve this problem because I'm, I'm under the same impression that you are. And we about to get Attorney General opinion, it's gonna state pretty much what you just said. So it's not like you've just been, I've been sitting here, I, I think about this all the time. And trying to come up with, solve the problem, you heard me speaking about it a little bit earlier, that was just the tip of the iceberg. I understand what you're saying about paying and never paying. And I could just, I can say, give somebody example of kind of what you're saying, like Sterlton. Washita Parish, they patrol them after six o'clock at zero charge. At Ridgewood, Washita Parish, they shut down at six. Washita Parish patrol them at zero charge. Marillage shut down at six. Sheriff Department patrols them at zero charge. Collison shut down at six o'clock, zero charge, but neither, six o'clock, zero charge. Why Bastrop? So you're right, on point. And I want to commend you for doing your, doing your diligent research. We, it's not gonna like step on anybody totally, but when person do their research and you're right, you know, it's just a fact, you can go research what you see. It's kind of, we, we have to do something. And based on, you go back and look at the resolution that was written up and the, um, it was two things that was done when it should have been expired, but it was done for nine days. What was the resolution done? I'm talking to the attorney, it was, it was two things that was written up when it was, when it was done.
There was, there was. There was, there was a res, now, this is before me, but I reviewed it. There was a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into basically contract with the sheriff's office for services. And that was done through a memorandum of understanding. The resolution does not have an end date on it. The memorandum of understanding had an end date on it. And the memorandum of understanding expired. There is a current memorandum of understanding that exists that is what we operate underneath. But the authority to enter into that memorandum of understanding exists from the resolution. Just like the resolution that would authorize us today to enter into the Office of Debt Recovery Contract. That, that's not a, it's not a cast resolution that says X date. There is no expiration date on the resolution granting authority. There is a, there was in the original memorandum of understanding, an expiration date of which it did expire. And there is a current memorandum of understanding for which it's being operated underneath.
Question for you, since you're attorney. Since I just illustrated that Sheriff Department patrols those areas free of charge, Sterlton and Ridgewood. Is there any way that we can, how can we go about getting out of there? Getting out of it, who, who can break, who can break it based on what I looked at?
So, I will tell you that, as I recall, the memorandum of understanding allows it to be canceled by any party, including the board who can vote to revoke that memorandum of understanding. That was not in the initial one, that is, in the one that was executed subsequently by this administration, which gave the power to any party to be able to do that. That said, if you're asking me, what is the law regarding the sheriff patrolling municipality? You have to look, the, the closest thing is, is that the law says that the sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer for the parish. If you have a municipality, they can enforce the municipal law, they could write citations to city court, they can write violations of any law that exists within the parish. The closest culinary that you've had that, or the closest comparison that you've had is when Jonesboro, Jonesboro got to a position, they were the first people to have a physical administrator, if you remember years ago. Jonesboro, at some point decided, hey, look, the police department, it's not, we're not apt, we can't fund it. Our budget deficit based on it, so they essentially closed down the police department. And at that point, either the sheriff or the city of Jonesboro requests an Attorney General opinion about what has to be required. The opinion was is that the sheriff is charged and has the care, custody and control of providing law enforcement from the parish. If a municipality is, has a police department, they have a duty to fund it to the, to the point they can. So basically, if you're solvent, if you have enough revenue, you have a duty to fund your police department. You can't just defund it and say, hey, we're just gonna take the surplus every year. But if you have a deficit, then you can close your police department and allow the sheriff to patrol and he, and it's, it's his duty. Now, the liability becomes on a municipality that has funds, that chooses not to have a police department. But in instances where you do not have the funds and you cannot afford to operate a police department, then the sheriff is required to do it and there is no liability on the municipality.
Okay, if we were, if we were saying, if we were saying, would the sheriff be legally obligated based on their opinion to patrol the city?
He is legally obligated by law to patrol the city and provide law enforcement services.
Well, I make a motion, okay, I want to make a motion that we revisit this memorandum of understanding before we make a decision, I want to have some detailed discussion, we're not police chiefing you. So we, I make a motion that we revisit this resolution. The resolution that created the memorandum of understanding.
I second, I second the motion to revisit, uh, memorandum and, uh, resolution.
Is, is that to, for clarity, is that to a specific, uh, date or a?
About next month.
Okay, so the, I guess for clarity, it'd be a motion to revisit on the next, the regular agenda?
Correct.
Just, just trying to clarify. We need to, we did miss one item, we got to the discussion, we missed item eight, approved the, the previous minutes. Now, mutually, I can tell you what the vote's gonna be, but. We, we had the discussion on it, we just had not voted on it, we moved on to item nine. So I'd ask if we could revisit item eight, which is approve previous minutes of regular meeting, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and special meetings, June twentieth, twenty-four, and June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and the regular meeting of July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. We didn't, we didn't take a vote on one.
Oh, okay. Calling over that previous motion. I, I had a motion on the floor today, she said we just didn't vote.
What is your pledge?
I.
All right. Can you oppose? You're all calm.
Well, well, I should know, I like to stand on record, um, I'm saying no vote because I don't, I don't think.
But you got, it's just vote, right?
Oh, yeah, vote, okay, no.
Oh, it's a curious. And we'll stick it, we'll put your state, you never want it, if you don't vote on it because it's.
Oh, you want it, remember?
Yeah.
For a simple reason, I don't like to go to a snapshot minute, I like a full detail minute.
We'll, we'll put that in a minute.
Okay, Sam, wait, thank you, sir.
I make a motion.
I make a motion.
Yes, sir.
You're about one second.
Yeah, yeah, we all second.
I second.